I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. This is a special budget workshop meeting, so we won't be going through the usual kind of preliminaries that we go through. It brings us the first item on the agenda, and I don't see it, but we should probably approve the agenda. Is that necessary, do you think?
Not necessary.
Okay.
This is just a workshop with one item.
Our first item is, well, we need to call the roll, though. We're not taking any votes, are we?
No votes.
This is abbreviated.
We will certainly, so Brandi is in the back, and so she will note who all is here, and so we'll have a record of this meeting, and certainly it is being livestreamed. But this is not an official meeting, it's simply a workshop. So no votes will be taken. This is just informational and answering questions and gathering input back from the commission.
So we have basically three items on the agenda, and we've already covered one of them. So if there's no objection from the commission, we will go on to item two, which is discussion items, and there is one and only one issue on the agenda under that heading. Administrator, if you'd like to proceed.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, and welcome to the first budget workshop for 2024. This morning's session is going to focus on the general fund. And as you know, at the end of this presentation, we'll go over again the schedule for all the other workshops and the topics that will be discussed at those workshops. But appreciate everyone being here this morning, so we could go through and talk about the general fund. But before we get into the general fund, sometimes my clicker works, there we go, and sometimes it doesn't. So I want to talk a little bit about what the budget process looks like, because it's taken a lot of work by staff and office holders to get to this point, to present to you all the 2024 budget. And it actually started back in May, when the commission held its strategic planning session. And then in July, we had almost 40 leaders from across the organization work together on that strategic plan. And then in June through July, we actually then start looking at the financial outlook. What are the economic conditions, and what are assumptions that we believe we're going to use in the 2024 budget process? We then work with all the departments and office holders to have them compile their base budgets, along with any budget additions that they would like to have, and also we look at our capital improvement program. Through August and October, we do a lot of work. This is sort of, you know, I hate to say it's where the sausage is made. As with anyone's budget, there are more requests, there are more needs than we actually have funding, and so how do we balance that? How do we align that with the strategic plan? In October, we came to the commission, and you approved the fee schedule on October 19th. We also heard from the outside agencies on October 19th about their requests for service agreements and amounts for the 2024 budget, and also provided to you all a strategic plan update that happened on October 26th. And then a couple of weeks ago, on November 16th, you were presented with a budget book and an overview of the budget, which is going to be followed by workshops like today through the end of the year, and then the budget adoption will take place in January of 2024 for our fiscal year, which runs January through December. So that's sort of the budget process in a nutshell. So today's workshop, we're going to do a little bit of a follow-up from the overview presentation. There were a couple of things that were asked of staff, so we're going to kind of start with that each time that we do a workshop. We'll also talk about the key considerations that we took in preparing the budget, along with the economic indicators that we look at, and then we'll really dive into the general fund. And so we'll do a fund overview, we'll look at revenues and expenditures, we'll hear from departments, we'll talk about budget highlights and additions, and then, of course, review the budget calendar. So as a follow-up from the overview presentation, just as a quick reminder, when we talk about personnel, what's in the proposed budget is increasing the starting salary for deputies by $5,000, and also addressing compression with existing sworn officers, so each one would also receive a $5,000 increase in their salary. For all non-sworn personnel within the organization, we've included a 4% cost of living adjustment. And I believe it was Commissioner Johnson that asked, what would an additional 1% cost if we went from a 4%, I'm assuming, to a 5% or beyond that? So this is a 1%, so a total 1% addition for everyone other than non-sworn personnel is, on a countywide basis, almost $371,000. But again, we have to look at it by fund, because each fund has its own funding source, and of course, the majority of our employees that are non-sworn are in the general fund, and so that would be an increase to the general fund of about $210,766. So I wanted to provide that information. Certainly, we continue to have those discussions as we go through the entire process and the budget cycle, but have that for your reference. The other item that we have, and this is for Commissioner Wagner, as we talked about fund balance and how we use fund balance, and how does that come into play? And so, while we talk about that a lot, and we did it in the overview showing pie charts and revenues, but sometimes, you know, it helps to put information in a different format. So if you would bear with me, I'd like to walk through this document. This is for, on a countywide basis, we will do this for each one of the funds, but hopefully this will kind of give some context for you. So I'm going to start and say, you know, the beginning fund balance estimated on a countywide basis going into 2024 is about $53.4 million. But in that $53.4 million, we have one-time dollars that are allocated for special sources that, in essence, are sitting in fund balance but are allocated and will be spent. Primarily, that's our emergency rental, that is the ARPA funding, and some bond proceeds yet to be spent. So those total one-time funds that are sitting there are $18.9 million. So if you remove that from our fund balance, we have funds available in the amount of $34.4 million on a countywide basis. So then if you take a look at operating revenues, revenues coming in in 2024, you'll see the different categories, and you'll see that's estimated to be $94.7 million. And I will say, when we talk a little bit later about economic indicators and things we look at, when a revenue projection is, we take a pretty conservative approach. And primarily, that's because the main source of revenue for the county is sales tax. We live and die by that, and so it can be very volatile and unpredictable. And so we do take a conservative approach on forecasting sales tax and use tax. But our operating revenues in the 24 budget are $94.7 million. Our expenditures, our operating expenditures for, on a countywide basis, are $119.9 million. So if you take operating revenues and take away operating expenditures, you'll see we have a deficit of $25.2 million, leaving us with a projected fund balance of $9.2 million. That is assuming that revenues come in as we plan, and expenditures come in exactly what we budget, and not over, not under. And so that leaves about an 8% fund balance of expenditures. The far right column, it takes a more realistic approach and utilizes also our trend analysis. So while the beginning fund balance doesn't change under trend analysis, nor do the one-time funds, so the funds available are still the same at $34.4 million. Revenues are still the same in this assumption, again, very conservative, of 94.7. But we get into our operating expenditures, and as we have had discussions in the past, the county will typically spend about 82% of our budgeted expenditures, our authorized budgeted expenditures. And that comes into place because a lot of it comes from our vacancy savings, either from retirements or resignations, you know, we, it takes time to fill vacancies, and so those salaries and those benefits are then used as a vacancy saving. So typically, that is the biggest category in which we see under budget, is our personnel costs. And so if we take basically 82% of the operating expenditures, that brings our expenditures down to $98.3 million. If you take our operating adjusted expenditures from our operating revenues, you'll see that then the deficit is $3.6 million. And again, if you go back up and look at our capital expenditures are 12.8, many of those are one-time expenses. So certainly, if revenues do not hit projections, you know, we will take things in place to ensure that we have a balanced budget in 2024. So 3.6, and so then we would project that our ending fund balance would be a little over, will be $30.8 million, and that's 31% of all operating expenditures, adjusted operating expenditures. Does that answer your question a little bit, Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, thank you. And it actually prompts a couple of other questions, but I don't want to derail, since we've got a lot of other things on here.
Go ahead, derail.
I have permission to derail?
Commissioner, let me go ahead and see where we're at in the flow, because I want to make sure that we're doing this in the most efficient way possible.
Yeah, no, I can, I can hold my questions to another time. This is extremely helpful. This is exactly what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Administrator, just to clarify on that, as far as how we proceed goes, I assume you're going to give us this in bite-sized chunks and then solicit any questions or comments, and then at the end, will there be a broader discussion?
We certainly are. There's a lot of information today. I have, you know, probably 60 slides to go through with you this morning. So yes, we will take it in incremental chunks, and certainly there will be points that we will be asking you, you know, do you have specific questions? So on this particular item, we're certainly welcome to take questions now. We have a lot of guests that are here from departments and offices that, once we get to their program and they're part of it, they probably would like to leave, and so may want to hold questions about this, because I think these are going to get into philosophical discussions with the commission, maybe towards the end of the presentation, if that's okay with permission.
With that being said, I think the way I'd like to continue the discussion would be, at each pause, if there's something, some specific clarification, certainly, I'd recognize the commissioner. I recognize commissioner under any circumstances, quite honestly, but just in the, in the interest of keeping the conversation moving and out of courtesy to our guests, if we can operate on that basis, if you, again, like any other meeting, if you seek recognition, please just hit your button, and I will recognize you in order in which you come in. Is there anyone who has any questions about what we have just been presented specifically? Seeing none, please proceed.
So the other thing, just as a reminder, the commission, we talked about at the overview, but when looking at putting the 2024 budget together, we wanted to make sure that our operating, our capital program changes that we were recommending all align with the strategic plan, and align those with the key focus areas that you see here, safety and well-being, financially sustainable, economic opportunity, infrastructure, and employer of choice. And so we keep those in our thought process as we put the budget together, and you'll see some of those components, and we've tried to lay out the budget document tying to those key considerations. But the other item that we look at is certainly the economic environment and economic indicators. So here are a couple of those. You know, Clay County unemployment is up from a year ago, September of this year, to compared September of last year. The county unemployment is 3.4 as of September. That is below the national average. In September, it was about 3.8. It is right in line with the unemployment in the metro area, that is 3.4 in September, and the state is slightly below that. It was 2.8 in September. Now, I know some recent numbers have come out since then, but we put a pin in it and look at it when it came in September. The other thing that we really strive to look at and do some research on is consumer confidence. As I talked about, sales tax is one of our major sources of revenue for all funds across the organization. And so what is consumer confidence? In September, it was 98.4, which is up from where it was a year ago. Last year at this time, in September, it was 96.5. And actually, before September, consumer confidence was a little higher, and we saw it kind of trending down before September at 98.4. And so just for individuals about consumer confidence and the rating, if this number would be 100, then that means, you know, consumer confidence has good confidence in the economy, they feel very comfortable with it. Usually, if it's below 100, then that takes into consideration that some consumers are a little pessimistic of what's going to happen with the economy, which could have an impact on their spending habits versus their saving habits. Now, again, we put the budget together, as you saw the timeline, and start several months ago. Certainly, the reports from the holiday sales that we've just had, some Friday and Saturday, and certainly cyber sales yesterday, are great, very positive numbers when it comes to consumer spending for the holidays. However, what we don't know is that trend going to continue throughout the holiday season, and, or is this, you know, sort of the one and done? And, you know, a lot of things come into play in consumer confidence, not just what is happening in their own environment and their own financial, and what they pay when they go to the grocery store or the gas station, but what's happening, you know, for the state, what's happening for the country, what's happening around the world, can come into play with how they feel about the economy, because we are a global economy, and what happens on the other side of the world does have an impact on how people feel about confidence in the economy. And then we also look at inflation, and certainly inflation was down this year compared to a year ago. So inflation in September was about 3.7. A year ago, it was 7.7. So we are seeing those, which does, has a benefit to our residents, it's also a benefit to the county and our operational costs and our expenditures, and so we take all of that into consideration, along with the county's growth. This is a chart of our assessed valuation from 2012 to 2023, and so you can see that there has been a steady growth in the assessed valuation. Part of that is new growth, and again, as a reminder, you know, Clay County is still one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Missouri. We're the third fastest-growing county in the state, and we're certainly, we're, for building permits, year-to-date in 2023, in the metro area, we are the third largest, fastest-growing county in the metro. So we're continuing to see growth. Now, we are anticipating some of that is slowing down a bit for various reasons with interest rate and inventory of product, but this assessed valuation takes into consideration not only growth from residential and commercial and industrial, but also takes into consideration assessed valuations when it came into reassessment of properties. So we're here to talk about the general fund. We've talked about what are some of the factors we look at when we start sitting down and putting the budget together. So this is an organizational chart of the county, and again, to talk about the general fund, we're going to talk about those departments, those offices, those services that are in green. If they are in blue, those are services and offices that actually have other funding sources and are in different funds that we will talk about at future workshops. So you can see, if you look at the organizational chart, a lot of the fun, functions within the, the organization are within the general fund. We have 541 full-time employees, there are 192 full-time employees in the general fund in those green boxes. So that is 35% of the employees are in the general fund. So you can't talk about budget if you don't start talking about numbers, so we're going to start getting into numbers. And again, everything you see going forward is simply going to be the general fund and not the county as a whole. So the general fund that you'll see here is the adopted budget in '22, the adopted budget in '23, and the proposed budget for '24. You'll see that as a total budget is a 12% increase in 2024 to the '23 adopted budget, $49.7 million is the proposed authorized budget. You go down, and you can look in breaking it into categories for you, you'll see the operating budget is up from $30 million to $34 million. Reserves are up, we're adding to reserves, that's our plan to add to reserves, this would be a 6% increase in reserves, and transfers are up from $10.2 million to $11.6 million. Transfers are basically money coming out of the general fund and going to other operating funds to help them with their budget. The transfers are up in the general fund for two reasons. Number one, an increase in a transfer as needed to the law enforcement fund, but also has to do with our 911 fund, and we talked about this a little briefly with the overview. As we know, we're very grateful to the citizens to supporting the 911 device fee. As we've talked about that, that will go into play on April 1. The county will not see any revenue from that until June 1st, the way the process works, and again, it's still an unknown for us. And so how we have typically funded the 911 is it had its own direct revenue from the device fee. It also was given a direct allocation of sales tax, and it also then received a transfer from the general fund as needed to make sure that we had enough funds to operate the 911. Because we have the device fee coming in, it will come in in June, and so what we have proposed is we have shifted. We have shifted from giving a direct sales tax directly to the 911 fund, we've left that in the general fund, but we have allocated in transfers, and so the, and you'll see it a little bit later on a slide about the transfer to the 911 fund as needed, up to $900,000, so taking those two together. We don't believe we're going to need those, but again, we want to ensure that we have the budget allocated, should it be needed, and so that transfer would happen. So that's part of the reasoning why you see basically almost that million-dollar increase in transfers from the general fund to other operating funds. This is another way of looking at revenues for the general fund. So the pie chart on the left is operating revenues, does not include reserves. And so our operating revenues for the general fund are $35.3 million. The largest component of that is sales tax. So 58% of the general fund revenue comes from sales tax. The second-largest category is fees, fines, leases, and licenses, and that's 21% of our revenue. We also then have grants at 7%. We have transfer in of 5%. So we have money coming into the general fund from other operating funds. One of those is coming from the TIF fund. We talked a little bit about this in the overview also. As you know, in 2023, we maintained a 10% transfer of sales tax to the TIF fund. We know and are now very confident that 7% is sufficient, and we proposed 7% transfer in 2024, but in '23, it's 10%. So there's anticipated to be excess funding in the TIF fund at the end of 2023, and so we're transferring out those excess funds, and will be allocated to the general fund, law enforcement fund, and the use tax funds. And so that's part of that transfer in. The other part of the transfer in is coming in from some of the other funds to help pay for our newly-created GIS department that now is housed in the general fund, but also does work for other funds like the assessor's office, the collectors, and the recorder. So operating revenues, $35.3 million. The pie chart on the right is all the available funding, getting to the 49.7. So you see the percentages changed, because we also include then the reserves of 29%. Looking at sales tax, just to help kind of show some trends here, you'll see actuals in '20, '21, '22, '23, estimate, '24, proposed, and then we do some projections out. And we'll talk later, at the end of this workshop, about projections going forward for the general fund. But basically, you want to look at that dark blue section on each pie, or structure, is what stays within the general fund. And so you see that in '22, it was a larger number, and '23, it came down, '22 or '24 is about the same, and we've kind of kept it same going forward. One of the areas that's kind of grown is the lighter blue in the middle, which is the sales tax going to other funds, which can go to road and bridge, it's gone to parks, it goes to law enforcement, so that is dedicated going directly to those funds. And then the top, this light blue section, is those that are transferred as needed. And so again, you look at '24, that is probably the, the section that grew the most, is the light blue, the transfer to other funds as needed, and primarily, that is due to the change with the 911 funding that we just talked about. I will say, for those who may leave earlier, when we're looking at projections, this does not take into consideration any changes with regard to 911 going forward. So we will be adjusting that as we get a sense of how much is needed for 911, if any is, for a transfer. So property tax is another revenue stream for the general fund. This will give you, again, a sense of, these are actuals, along with '23's estimated for this year, and then '24 proposed. So the county has made a conscious decision to start lowering the mill levy on the general fund, and you see a reflection of that, but it also is impacted by growth that we have, and also reassessed valuation. 2024 goes up slightly from '23's estimate for property tax. The commission did maintain the mill levy for the general fund, the same as it was in 2023, and so that increase is about slightly less than $50,000 in additional revenue for property tax. Part of that is growth, and part of that is tied to reassessment and, you know, the maximum that can occur with the Hancock Rule. So these are the major revenue sources for the general fund. This, again, will give you some historical context by growth. Sales tax is the first one. Sales tax is the first one. So you see actuals from '19 through '22, estimated for '23, and proposed in '24. And so you can see, we certainly saw some big jumps, especially around COVID, when, which was interesting to all of us when we saw that, that sales tax went up almost for every jurisdiction that I talked to, that people did apparently a lot of shopping online during COVID. But you'll see again, our estimate for '23, we see about a 3.2% growth is what we're expecting, and our proposed for '24 is a 5.3% growth. Property tax, you'll see again, as we've talked about, the commission has made a conscious decision to continue to lower that mill levy in the general fund. And so you've seen the reduction come through and then there, but in '24, as we said, the mill levy has stayed the same and we had a little bit of growth. And so you see about a 3% growth in property tax. Fees, fines, and licenses, again, you'll see again, jumped up, especially in '21. We saw the housing market really took off in 2021. In '24, we're proposing a slight reduction in our fees and fines and licenses, and primarily that is tried to development with regard what's going on with interest rates and building permits and recording. And so we felt to be again, conservative in our projections with when it comes to sales tax and fees and licenses that come along with development. So we talk about fund authorization. And so the proposed budget is authorizing $49.7 million. You'll see by the pie chart how that breaks out. 69% of it is operating budget, 8% of it is reserves, and 23% of it is transfers to other funds that we've already talked about. The list on the right is identifies for you all the departments and offices that are in the general fund. And we actually have 31 different departments or offices that are contained within the general fund. And so what we've done here is listed them for you from the largest budget, which is the transfer budget of 11.6 million or 23%, all the way down to our smallest department allocation, which is debt service transferring out of the general fund to the debt service fund to pay a portion of outstanding obligation in the amount of $14,000. So this is just again, showing you how the expenditures are allocated by department or by office in the general fund that's being proposed. And we're going to talk about these more individually as we get into them. So we kind of boil down what is the general fund operating budget. And so in this particular case, it is all of the expenditure categories plus transfers, but it does not include the reserves. So the operating budget for the general fund is 45.7 million. The pie chart will show you how is that allocated. Well, 45%, almost 46% is in personnel costs. 26% is in contractual. Commodities is 2%. Capital is less than 1% and transfer is 25%. Again, capital, not that we're not buying capital for those departments and functions in the general fund, but those are actually being paid for out of the use tax, at the capital use tax funds. The chart in the lower right hand actually then tries to provide you historical content about what has been actual for '19, '20, '21, '22, while we're estimating in '23 and what's being proposed in '24 by category. And so I'm only going to focus on between '23 and '24. And so we'll start with personnel. You'll see a big jump from 16 million to 20 million. Well, again, in '23, in all our actuals, there were actual expenditures. And so what you see there is reflective of those vacancy savings that we've talked about. But in our budget process for 2024, we budget for all positions, all 192 full-time positions in the general fund and part-time positions, their full salary and their full benefits for 365 days a year. Our contractual is up. In our contractual, you'll hear a little bit more about this, but obviously, cost of operation has gone up with inflation. Also, utility costs have gone up. Technology has gone up for us, and also some contractual obligations is what's driving the increase in that particular category. Commodities is up from 500,000 to 900,000. Part of that is looking at mailing costs, printing costs, also a new program of power washing buildings that you're going to hear about that. And so that's driving some of that cost. Capital is down in the general fund from 256,000 to 74,000. As I said, not that we're not buying capital for our general fund, but it's coming out of the use tax fund and not out directly out of the general fund. And then you see the transfers from estimated 8 million in '23 to again, 11.6 million in '24. Again, two of those going to law enforcement and going to 911 are as needed. So may not come in at the 11.6. We'll just wait and see. Transfers are the biggest category. And so I wanted to provide for the commission some historical information about what has been in the transfers out of the general fund into other funds. And so you can see to the far right, 2024, the 11.6 million, what are we transferring to? Well, 10.1 of it is going to law enforcement. Again, emergency, 911, 966,000. Both of those are as needed. And then we have the other four categories that are either obligated statutorily or contractually that we will transfer and meet those obligations. But I also wanted to provide to you what was actually done in '19 and '20, '21, and '22. So we have some that are consistent, like law enforcement, emergency, and those statutory or contractual obligations we have done every year historically. But we've also done some additional transfers, one offs, depending on the needs of that particular year in '19 or '20 and '21. But you can see in '19, what the general fund transferred to other funds was a little over $5 million. In 2024, we're doubling that and we're at $11.6 million to other funds. So now we're going to get into a little bit more of the presentations by the different departments and functions. So I'm going to kick it off and talk a little bit about the governmental functions. And so we've kind of grouped these together. And so we have eight different budgets that we've put together and that we call the governmental function. And so you see them listed here, and I'm just going to go through each one and kind of talk about the what's driving the change from the '24 budget, proposed budget to the '23. So the first one is the county commission's budget. You'll see that we have a 4.9% increase in the commission's budget. Under the constitution, the commission's salaries are tied to the Missouri House representative salaries. In this last legislative action, the House of Representatives, legislature raised the salaries of the House of Representatives. And so we have factored in that increase for commissioner wages that will go into effect on January 1, and that's per our constitution. The election commission you'll see is up 18%. There's twofold for that. Number one, their inflationary costs, but also in 2024 is a presidential election. And we know when we have a presidential election in August and November, costs are more expensive than normal elections. And so that has been taken into consideration at their request. The county election, we pay for our portion of the county elections. You'll see that that's up 45% from 500,000 to 725,000. Number, two reasons. Number one, because again, presidential election next year, and so we know our costs will be up just for standard elections. But we have also factored in the county having a share on the April ballot. Should we have a county question on the April ballot, then we would have additional costs associated with that. So we funded for that. The Board of Equalization, their budget is down about 10%. You'll hear more about this, but what we have done across the organization, if we have compiled our copier lease fees and copier costs under the facility department's budget. So you'll see that across the organization, we've moved those expenses out of individual departments and combined them all into one fund in the facilities budget. We also did the same thing with mailing, and postage is now in the facilities budget for countywide basis. And so the Board of Equalization, while it's a 10% increase, it's a couple of thousand dollars because of those savings. Appropriations to outside agencies. So this is up 9%. And what we funded in the budget, the proposed budget, is the requests from all the outside agencies that came and spoke with you. Several of them did request increase in additional funding from the 2023. The University of Missouri Extension asked for additional funding. The Rebuilding Together Kansas City asked for additional funding, and the Northland Healthcare asked for additional funding. So those are all in the budget as they requested. And certainly, I know the commission is going to have those discussions, but I remind the commission that these are placeholders in the budget. Just because those numbers are in the budget doesn't mean that those agencies automatically get those funds. As you recall, in January, February, we bring forward to you service level agreements with those agencies in which you approve the actual funding. Now, I know you may want to have some discussion about that, and certainly we'll get to that point. But just so you know, that's that is what's driving that increase of 9% is we funded everyone's request. County councillor has a slight increase. Government association membership is up slightly too. We did some recalculation. What goes into this and government agencies is all the chamber memberships that the county has that we support. Also, what we funded, which the commission had discussed and wanted, was a membership into the National Association of Counties and the Missouri Association of Counties. And so those annual memberships are included in that line item. And then the administration budget is there. It goes up about 8%. So it's like others dealing with inflation, but the largest increase is in our risk management. And so council, commission may recall that when we went out to bid last time for our broker, insurance broker services, we requested, and when we bid our insurance, property and casualty insurance, we now bid it net of commission. What the county was used to doing is when we would bid our property and casualty insurance in our rates that we had to pay was the commission that our broker was receiving. And so we never saw those dollars. We never knew exactly what those amounts were. So it's not uncommon to break those apart. And so when we bid our property and casualty insurance to travelers or whoever those vendors, they are net of commission. It's truly what is the insurance costing us and what are those rates and why should they be there? But we also do then have a fee for our broker, and that's under contract. And so we've carved that out, and so the fee to pay the broker is under our risk management fund, which is under administration. So that's really the bulk of that increase. It's about $80,000, which is included, and so it's not showing up in insurance premiums. And the pie chart on the right, and so you're going to see this on the same structure for every department that we go through and talk about. So for all eight functions, you can see that for the 2024 budget, 28% is in personnel and 70% of that is in contractual and a small, less than 1% is in commodities. So talking about accomplishments for this group of departments, I'm not going to read through all of these, but again, we've tried to align the accomplishments with our key focus areas out of the strategic plan. So just going to hit a couple of things. Certainly, the strategic plan is one accomplishment for the commission and for the organization. Certainly voter approval of the 911 devices subscriber fee by 61% that happened in November. We've also launched websites, which the tourism website or the county's website, certainly moving in the direction of more technology, paperless packets. In '23, the mill levy was reduced for property tax. The SIR tax was reduced. We are finalists for the Royal Stadium. And so, you know, there have been a lot of accomplishments by those functions within the organization, whether in any of these particular categories, adding additional funding for road maintenance, you know, the ARPA allocations with giving 31% of ARPA to safety and well-being. 41% of ARPA has been given to outside agencies. 17% of ARPA has been given and utilized for county infrastructure projects and stormwater projects. So I could go on and on and on about all the great accomplishments that have happened in 2023. While we've tied it into this particular area, certainly many of these things could not happen without all the other departments playing a role and being and collaborating on getting those things done. As we look at 2024, four goals in this particular area, we've already talked about the memberships that the commission wanted to have in the National and Missouri Association of Counties. We funded for an April ballot issue. We've certainly funded for the anticipated costs due to a presidential election. We are looking at the implementation of Senate Bill 190, certainly continuing to use technology and expanding, expanding loss control program. We funded the increased request from the outside agencies, and then I think certainly we've talked about the TIF, looking at those trends and changing from a 10% philosophy to a 7% philosophy was certainly has helped the operating budget be sustainable. And certainly, the comprehensive plan update is underway right now, and it's anticipated that that will be adopted in the fall of 2024. Certainly, looking at the needs at the detention facility and the courthouse are items that are funded in next year's budget. We're continuing to work with courts on looking for an appropriate location for the transition program. We're continuing to talk and going to be working on the evaluation of establishing a municipal court and also adopting the 21 building codes. We have a lot of collaboration, not only with our municipalities, but other counties. We're working with Platte County, Ray County, and Clinton Counties to find an appropriate space for the public defender. Certainly, looking at COLA increases and salary adjustments for our employees, onsite counseling, conducting a classification and compensation study. We've secured 3.2 million for the Stocktail Bridge replacement, and we're also increasing road maintenance program by 15%. So quite a few positive goals that align with the commission's strategic plan are in place with this particular group. And you'll hear, you'll hear these again from other departments that will play a role in it, and also some other things that they've got planned. So I'm going to stop here and ask, are there questions that the commission has about those particular departments and those budgets that are being proposed?
Are there any questions or comments on these issues from any commissioners? I see none, so unless someone pops up, you may proceed.
Okay. Well, and if anybody needs to get more coffee, please feel free. I know it's a lot of numbers and a lot of information. So these are workshops and they're very, very informative. So the next group that we're going to talk about is the judicial functions. And so under the judicial function, we have the courts budget, juvenile's budget, the prosecutor, the medical examiner, and the public administrator. And so you're going to hear from members of this team in just a second, but just again, keeping the same format, the courts budget is proposed to go up 5%. These are operating expenditures. Juvenile is expected to go up 4%. The prosecutor, 4%. Medical examiner, for those that you may not know, this is a contractual arrangement. We went out to bid several years ago. And so this is a planned 3% contractual increase for those services. And then the public administrator's budget is going up 7%. And the increase of that is we have planned the purchase or replacement of their vehicle. So their vehicle is several years old, and it's got quite a bit of mileage on it. And so looking at it, it is recommended that it be replaced. It is time for it. It's on its replacement schedule. And so it's important to note that the public defender is required by law to visit their wards face to face throughout the year. And so many of their wards are actually in locations across the state. They go as far as St. Louis. They've gone to Springfield and certainly to St. Joseph's. So they do a lot of traveling in this vehicle across the state. And so it's not only to visit wards, but it's also sometimes it's helping wards, whether it's to get to a doctor's appointment. So it has to be able to transport individuals, and there are many times that they're helping wards and they're actually packing up belongings of the wards and also helping to to deal with those. So that is proposed in this budget. It is coming out of the capital fund. And so when you look at these numbers, it's not just general fund numbers, but if there are other funds that are contributing to this operation, it is also included. And so you'll see a note down there below that says, you know, this includes about $650,000 from the capital fund. So it's not just the vehicle, but it's also technology for the courtroom. So those funds are there along with, there's a law library fund that's there. And then the prosecutor has four small statutory funds that are also included, and that's about $111,000 that's added to their budget that is also available to the prosecutor. If you look to the right, you'll see the pie chart. Again, how is the budget allocated for the judicial functions? 74% of their budget total is in personnel. 18% is in contractual. 3% is in commodities, and then we have 5% of it is in capital. And so with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to representatives from the court. actually going to turn it over to representatives from the court. I don't believe Judge Fluke was able to join us, but I think he's got a representative. Judge O'Hara is here. And then we also have Janet Rogers from the, who's our Director of Juvenile Court Services. So they're going to talk a little bit about their budgets. They're going to talk about their accomplishments and their goals for next year. And then also, when the court in juvenile is done, then we also have prosecuting attorney Zach Thompson, who's here, who will also then talk about a little bit, high level about his budget and what his goals and his accomplishments are. And so with that, Judge, you want to go? Thank you. And if you just click to the, this will, if you want to advance, so we've got your accomplishments, and then the next one is your goals.
Okay, sounds great. Hi, I'm Alicia O'Hara. It's nice to see all of you again. And with me is Denise Banning, who is our Executive Secretary for the Presiding Judge. Judge Fluke is still in court right now. So just to talk to you guys a little bit about some of our court and then also juvenile accomplishments. Securing grant funding, I talked to you all a little bit about this when we were here to discuss transitions. Last year, under the umbrella of the Family Court, we secured about $69,000 in grant funding. This year, we have over $300,000 in grant funding. Over $200,000 of that is for our new domestic violence court that just kicked off. All of that funding is non-matching funding, so it doesn't require the county to contribute any money. We've been very deliberate in not applying for any grants that would require any sort of monies from the county to be contributed. We are also in juvenile, which Ms. Rogers will talk more about, we are still housing juveniles from surrounding counties. So many other of our surrounding counties don't have a place to house the juveniles anymore, so they come to Clay County. We've also increased the rate in which we charge other counties because we know they have no other option, so we can be increasing some of the revenue that Clay County gets. And we've increased that amount significantly, but I think it's certainly fair. As far as safety and well-being, we have created the domestic violence court, which hopefully I'll talk to you guys about sometime. It is completely funded by grants, so it doesn't cost the county any money, and we are providing a ton of different services right now for the victims of domestic violence. We most recently received information from what used to be Tri-County Mental Health that we got an additional $50,000. And typically, we can provide victim services where we, you know, let them know about different shelter opportunities or food and clothing, transportation. But we now, I have been able to hire what I would call our victim advocate on steroids, basically. She can, is also a lawyer and a victim advocate. So when these domestic violence victims need support as far as legal avenues, which frequently they have issues maybe with eviction, or they need a divorce or a change or a modification in their parenting time, we can provide victims that at no charge to them. So we're really, really thrilled about that. We have also been increasing visits in our transitions program. As you all know, when I talked about the need for a building, an hour a week is what these parents get with their kids through Children's Division. We are adding to that to try to supplement that. Some of these parents have their children removed from them right after they are born, and one hour a week is just not going to form a bond, and it's going to be pretty traumatic for these kids. So we're able to give them a lot more visits with their parents. We are reunifying a lot more children in Clay County than we have in the past. As far as infrastructure goes, Ms. Rogers knows much more about this than I do, and we'll discuss it, but the enhanced facility security at the juvenile office, she can talk about that, and then enhanced security at the group homes. And then some of our goals for next year, we plan on continuing to expand our domestic violence program, which that's already happening, continue to work on reunifying children. Clay County is still well above both the state average for children that we're bringing into care, and we're one of the top counties in the state right now with the number of children that we have in care. We're simply not bringing children into care that don't need to, and we are reunifying them with parents much more efficiently and quicker than we have. Compensation is some of our goals. Salary adjustment for juvenile detention, which Ms. Rogers will discuss. Compensation for our monitors for the transitions program, which most of you are familiar with it when I spoke last time, but this is the supervised visits where we're working on reunifying families. To, we have typically relied on volunteers. We would like to be able to compensate these people so that we can reunify more children and provide more opportunities for this to happen, including Saturdays, Saturday visits for those who work a nine to five, and we've actually already started the Saturday visits twice a month. As far as infrastructure from the courtroom, we have some computer replacement that is occurring right now that IT is helping with. Judge Fluke knows a lot more about this than I do. Denise probably knows a lot more about this than I do. But some new computers, courtroom technology upgrades. I'll tell you that as far as I'm concerned, I just rely on the IT people, and if they tell me I need an upgrade, I just trust what they say. And I know that we are looking at the possibility of eventually having another judge in Clay County. Our courthouse is too small as it is right now. When we got Division Nine, we had to take the jury assembly room and turn that into a courtroom. We just simply don't have any other room right now to turn into another courtroom. So that's something that I know that we'll be discussing with you all at some point. But as far as our goals, those are our goals. Do you all have any questions about any of the judicial functions? And then all Ms. Rogers talked about a little bit more juvenile, but any questions I can answer for you guys?
Are there any questions regarding court and juvenile goals?
No.
I see no one chiming in, so if there are none, we will proceed. No, thank you very much.
Good morning. Janet Rogers, juvenile officer and Director of Juvenile Court Services. I'm going to be real quick, because Judge O'Hara, I think, covered most of this. Is that me? Oh, okay. Our accomplishments, the Commission was generous enough to allow us to purchase a metal detector, x-ray machine, and we were able to fully staff a deputy sheriff at the front desk during business hours, which has helped with client and staff, really a feeling of security. We're still in the process of getting it all set up correctly. We had to redo the front entrance, and the facilities has managed to make an exit door, so we're going to have an in and an out once we get it all done. But we should have that accomplished, hopefully, I'm hoping by March. We are also in the process of getting, we got, the Commission let us get cameras at the group homes, which allowed us to become PRIA compliant, which is a federal statute. And so now we're federally compliant, state compliant as far as PRIA goes, which is much appreciated. We're working on getting badge access to the group homes, which means the badges can be swiped instead of using keys, which can be lost, misplaced, that kind of thing. And then we're in the process, probably 2025, of asking for audio at the group homes, just as an extra level of security for the staff and the kids to be able to put in audio, which shouldn't be a larger cost. It's not going to be as much as the cameras were. So that's something that we're kicking around probably for the '25 budget, long term. So at this point, our goals as far as, or I'm sorry, our accomplishments, as far as the, like Judge talked about, the transitions program, we are growing. We've got three nights now and a Saturday. We're going to continue to grow, and of course, that's going to, we're going to need more than just that juvenile office building to do those visits in. It's getting, it's, we're making it work, but it's not ideal, and it's not what we'd like to use to serve the citizens of this county. So we are still in the process of looking for the building that we can hold those visits in and do other programming. We've got a lot of classes, a lot of different things we could use it for if we could secure a building. So that is something we're also in the process of. And then, and for our immediate goals for 2024, the salary adjustments for juvenile detention and group home, we are asking, and it is, I believe, in the preliminary budget asked, that we adjust those due to the fact that we're having, of course, the juvenile division has the highest turnover rate in the entire county, and that is due to shift work. It's overnights, it's weekends, it's nights, and it's not the greatest job. Our starting pay was below where you could basically go to a restaurant or a fast food place, get a job, and you'd be paid more. So we are looking at adjusting that for the detention and group homes, and we're also looking at a shift differential for the overnight 12 to 8 shift, for a $2 shift differential in order to, which is what the state has gone to in their juvenile detention facilities this year. In July, they started a $2 shift differential, anything from 4:00 PM to 8:00 AM. They're giving a shift differential in all juvenile detention facilities that are state-run. So in keeping with that, I would like to at least, I think at this point, start the 12, midnight to 8 shift on the shift differential, and then look at possibly expanding that to the evening hours in the future, to try to recruit and keep good, qualified staff. These are people that are watching these juveniles. They've been ordered to be there, whether it's the group home or detention. And so we need people that are there to watch these kids and make sure they're safe, competent employees. We've got the children's lives in our hands, so it's important that we have qualified staff. Compensation for monitors, we've requested due to the lack of volunteer, people that just do not want to volunteer anymore. They want to be paid. So we're, and the transitions program is expanding, so we need to be able to supervise those visits. And that is, that's an essential part of it. And then the continued safety enhancements for juvenile, like we talked about, I'd like to look at audio in the next year or so. One of the things that we really want to concentrate on is keeping and retaining good employees. And so I'm working with the county administrator on salaries. There's some discrepancies in some of the salaries, and we're working on trying to get that resolved, to be able to keep and retain some employees. We've got some that have been there for a decade, and they're under starting pay, so we're looking at trying to get that rectified due to pay plan issues. So do you guys have any questions for me?
Just one thing I want to ask. This is awfully loud, by the way. I'll try to stand back from this. You had made reference to cameras and PRIA. For those who may be watching and are not familiar, could you go ahead and explain what that is?
Yes, it's the Prison Rape Elimination Act that was put in place years ago by the federal government to ensure, to put in safety measures in facilities, adult and juvenile facilities to eliminate any kind of assaults, rapes, sexual violations of any kind inside those facilities. So one of the prerequisites they had is that you should have cameras in all the, all the common areas, not necessarily rooms. You don't have them in rooms or anything like that, or bathrooms, but in common areas. And you, we were grandfathered in because we'd been in existence before that act came in, but that act had been in place for a long time, and it was something that needed to be addressed. And it's also a safety issue for staff, too. If a child says something happened, we can go back and look and see exactly what happened.
My mic is getting feedback. I'm just going to speak a little bit more loudly. So Commissioner, will you kind of...
So will the compensation, the comp plan that we're going to work on, the salary plan, will that include them?
Yes. Yeah, the classification compensation study will include all, including sworn officers. It will do, it will include every position.
Okay. And then you mentioned audio recording. Is that a certification part of the two, or is that just?
No.
Oh, one?
That'd be another layer of security and protection for all involved. We currently have audio in the multipurpose room, in the day rooms, and the control room in detention, in our juvenile detention. And that, we found, has helped us, like if a kid's saying, somebody's screaming at, somebody was cussing at me, you know, a staff, and we've gone back and looked, and they haven't, or they have, we're able to verify that through the audio, where you can't with just a camera.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. I just didn't know if that was a certification part of it.
No.
But I did.
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson, I'm going to go ahead and turn your mic on. I guess a lot of feedback. Go ahead and punch your button, and maybe you can give feedback.
That's okay. I can speak louder than that. He asked some of my questions. The one I have, how many officers or staff are in the zombie crowd? How many of them will accrue to pay? Okay, so I have about 85 positions under, 85 positions under me. They're not all filled because we've got a lot of turnover, and some are part-time positions, some are full-time. So we're looking at, I've got around 30 people in the administrative side of it, which are the D.J.'s, which handle the court cases and remove the kids from homes and detain the kids. And then I've got about 25 or so in detention, and then I've got about 15 to, it depends, it fluctuates because I have a lot of part-time positions. Some are filled, some aren't. So it's around 80 or so that I have, 80, 85, something like that. But they're not all filled. So the positions where I'm talking about with the comp, with the compression, would be the administrative department. Because the juvenile detention and the group home departments, we've raised the, we've raised that, or we've asked for that in this, in this budget, and it's been put in the pending budget for the detention in the group homes. So those adjustments have already been made.
They're in the proposal.
The proposed budget, correct.
Yes.
Commissioner, going forward, since we seem to have some technical issues, we want you to recognize, go ahead and hit your button, so it appears on my screen, and recognize it, and then let you start thinking until we get audio things straightened out. Go ahead and just speak as loudly as you can, and then put, turn off your mic that way. I'll know you're speaking, and I can move on to the next commission. So with that, are there any Commissioners who would like to ask more questions or have any more comments? I see none, and I see no education, so thank you very much.
Commissioner, may I make a real quick comment? I would just like to say that Victor Hurlberg, I would like to just give a shout out to him. He volunteered to do our two audits for transitions and CASA programs, the 501(c)(3) nonprofits. He did that free of charge. It's a lot to do. He did that so that we would have access to more funding, to more grant funding that requires financial audits of nonprofit organizations. Our hands were tied in asking for some of this additional funding because we didn't have an audit, and he stepped up and did that for both organizations. And I'm just eternally grateful. Everybody on the staff's grateful, and I just thought the Commission should know what he did.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate, not just specifically the issuance of auditor Hurlberg, but also I think we are seeing a spirit of cooperation between different departments throughout government that is a breath of fresh air, a great name that's up here. Certainly, we, as the Commission, appreciate in letting different areas of the country can work together to cooperate and not just incidentally save, running a mile or let money go to the services of our citizens, rather than to outside contracts or whatever the case may be. So.
Yes, yes, greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Your slides are next.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Zach Thompson, and I am the Clay County Prosecuting Attorney. I appreciate the taking the time to meet with us today and going over some of our 2023 accomplishments. First, we did a restructuring of office staffing in the prosecutor's office. I assumed the role of prosecutor in October of last year, and we'd been doing things the same way for a long, long time. And there's reasons for that to be the case sometimes, and then sometimes that's just inertia. So we've been working actively in modernizing our office and restructuring it to make it as efficient as possible. We've also supported development and implementation of alternative resolution programs. Denny Davidson is an assistant prosecutor in our office. He's been working very hard in setting up a DWI court. Neighboring counties have a court like this. Platte and Jackson County both have DWI courts. Platte and Jackson County both have DWI courts. Clay County will have a DWI court next year. The court is designed to address DWI offenses, treat the underlying cause, and hold offenders accountable. We're also happy to work with Judge O'Hara in the court in her creation of a domestic violence court. One of the main accomplishments that is often overlooked in the prosecutor's office is our work obtaining child support for children who deserve and need it. Grant Kelly's here, he's my director of, of child support. We are extremely efficient. For every dollar that is spent in our office, we recover on average more than any other county in Missouri. And when you compare our county to any other state in America, we perform more efficiently. So, this is an excellent way that we can serve our community, that people don't really understand that that's one of our functions in the prosecutor's office. When it comes to employer of choice, we've started a staff retention initiative. There's a couple aspects to this. First, we are having regular meetings. I, I meet with everyone who is employed in the prosecutor's office. We talk about goals and how to achieve them. We also have implemented expanded training opportunities. That's both online and in-person training opportunities. We have a relatively young office. The people who work as assistant prosecutors in our office are often newly out of law school. So, it is important that we put an emphasis on training for them. We also put an emphasis on training for our support staff. And speaking of training, we, we put an emphasis on cross-training all our support staff members. For a long time, when one person was sick in the office, that function just ceased to exist, right? We were unable to do this thing if one person was gone. That issue came up a couple times. We've taken positive steps to make sure that doesn't happen again. When it comes to infrastructure, we've had some safety improvements to the office. And I, once again, I want to thank the commission for their work when it comes to that. We've put bullet-resistant glass and improved the security at the main entrance where folks interact from the community with our office. So, our goals for 2024, so establish specific treatment court options. We mentioned the, the DWI court. That is one of the treatment courts we have in Clay County. We also have a veterans' court, a drug treatment court, and a mental health court. I like these courts because they provide an extra tool in the prosecutor's toolbox. Not everyone needs to go to prison for every single case, sometimes they do, but that's not the case each time. It requires the prosecutor to exercise discretion when evaluating a case. We're going to add an additional assistant prosecuting attorney, which I think is vitally important, and additional support staff position. These are important first steps in providing the essential obligation of local government is public safety. So, we look forward to adding those positions in our office and getting those folks to work. When it comes to being an employer of choice, we're expanding training opportunities, right? People don't become assistant prosecutors because they want to become wealthy attorneys, right? They want to serve our community, do the right thing. So, one of the benefits they get from that work in the prosecutor's office is training. So, we are going to put a focus on training. When it comes to infrastructure, we are going to implement a fileless system. We still take paper files up to court. I think we are one of the only counties in Missouri that still does that. We're actively taking steps to address that, and hopefully we'll be paperless in the next year. That's going to be, in addition to being more efficient, we'll hopefully have some cost savings when it comes to all the paper we go through in our office. We're going to utilize a central data tracking system. When I took office in October last year, it was sometimes difficult to get reliable numbers when asking about the numbers of cases we, we filed and how they were resolved. So, beginning in June of this year, we will be able to provide reliable, repeatable statistics about what's going on in the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. And we also look forward in participating in the Rooney Justice Needs Assessment Study to identify future spacing and technology requirements for our office. So, briefly, I just wanted to thank the commission for their emphasis on public safety. There, like I said, there's no more essential duty in local government than public safety and, and basic infrastructure. I think this commission has demonstrated that commitment, especially through their funding to the sheriff's department. But I think it's important for us to realize that public safety does not stop at an arrest, right? In order to best serve our community, we have to have a, a full, professional, and ethical prosecution of a case. So, as we add more deputies, as our population grows, as other municipal agencies hire officers, that all results in an increased volume of cases, right? So, a, as we move forward, I wanted to, to let the, the commission know that I am very grateful for the, the resources they provided to our office to do our job, but that, that conversation will likely continue. We've all seen the stories in the news about the increase in violent crime. I asked before we came up about how many open murder cases we have in Clay County. Twenty-nine, 29 open murder cases. I've been an assistant prosecutor for 11 years before I became the prosecuting attorney. I've never seen that number so high. So, that is a, that's a serious issue. Those cases are extremely time-intensive. There are also a cost associated with those cases, right? Travel costs, expert witness costs, deposition costs. So, we may have further conversations over the course of the year as some of these cases play out. I look forward to working with the commission and addressing these issues specifically, you know, our, our spacing needs, our salary needs, and our staffing needs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission has, or if I don't know the answer, get the answer to you in a timely fashion.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make just two real quick points, and I'll recognize Commissioner Johnson. First off, I want to just say how much I appreciate the work of your office, both under yourself and your predecessor. My family had unfortunately occasion to interact with your offices, and we felt as though that we were, we were treated in a, in a way that reflected sensitivity, but a good deal of professionalism. So, certainly appreciate that on a personal level. On a, a different topic that you'd raised was the different veterans' courts and, and the others. One of the things I think that, you know, you had a lot of information to impart to us, but one of the things I think it's important to, I think, take into account is that the way you are conducting your offices is not just finding those persons who have committed or guilty of committing crimes and making sure that justice is done, but, excuse me, in those situations, we have veterans' court, drug court, you're actually working it from the other direction, and that is turning people around, reducing the future crimes that may well be committed, at least by those individuals. Can you give us, do you have a, a feel for what the recidivism rate is for those people who go through these programs that you work with the courts on?
I mean, I, I don't have specific numbers. I can tell you, people who successfully complete these courts have drastically lower rates of recidivism than folks who receive a sentence or who get a regular probation. The evidence on that's pretty clear.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Johnson, I believe you are seeking recognition.
Do I use this one now? I guess so. I was hoping for a headset so I could dance at the same time. Okay, couple questions. Excuse me, my voice is going. Thank you very much for your presentation. One, I don't know a whole lot about the details about your, your office, your specific office, how, how this prosecuting office runs, but do you know off the top of your head, and if you don't, that's okay, but I'm putting you on the spot here, what kind of caseload? How many cases your, your prosecuting attorneys are handling?
Well, so, it varies on the type of cases they handle, right? Because a drug case may not require as much time as a...
Speak into the microphone so that you properly record it. Thank you.
Sure. So, it just depends on the type of case the prosecutor's handling, right? So, if it's, if it's a, a possession case, it requires less time than a case involving sex offenses against a child, right? So, it, it varies. I, I can say that I had an assistant prosecutor compare our numbers to the recommended caseload from the National District Attorneys Association, and we were well above that. Even the, the person with the lowest amount of cases is, is well above that, and that prosecutors handling serious complicated cases, not possession cases.
That's what I was going to ask you, so thank you for that. So, there's, I'm going to get on my soapbox for a second because I've, I know I've talked about this before, but public safety, we all ran on public safety, and that's, that's probably the number one thing, public safety and infrastructure that our citizens care about. And when we talk about public safety, public safety touches everything, everything in this community, everything in this county, from our schools to our small businesses to, to just our, our, just our perception of safety i- is huge. And, and we've, don't have to look very far to see counties that, that, that are much worse off, and it's, it's impacted everything. And I don't want to go there, and, and I want to stay as safe as we can in this community. And as you mentioned, safety involves a lot of different folks, a lot of different departments, and it includes obviously the sheriff's department and our, and our law enforcement and the, on the streets. They're very important, but everything they do feeds right into your office, and everything you do feeds right into the court system. So, all those things have to be functioning properly, have to be funded properly. I will tell you, I was shocked when I, when I started running for office a year and a half ago, whatever it was, I, I combed through the budget, I was shocked to see the salary of our attorneys in your office. When we have a position that requires a doctorate, a minimum, it requires, in this case, a Juris Doctorate, is a minimum requirement, you think there's a value that goes along with having that kind of degree that we require. And I was absolutely shocked that, that we get anybody to apply at, at the rates, at the salaries that we're paying. And, and, and I don't, I don't mean to fix everything in this, in this budget year, but I think we and, and staff at, at the, at the higher end needs to be looking, not at, not at this year, but we need to look in down the road several years, and how do we continue down the path of, of making public safety the priority, which includes pay. Not only money for the office, but pay for our prosecuting attorneys. So, our, your salary is tied to our, to our constitution, yours as well as the sheriff's. And I've talked about this behind closed doors, and that's something I want to address in the future. I think our sheriff, who has a PhD as well, as well as our, as Zach here, I, I think that they are very much underpaid for their positions, as well as the people that work for them. And the only way to fix the sheriff's and Zach's pay is through the constitution, which, that's a different topic. But certainly in the, in his, in Zach's office, the, the prosecuting attorneys that work there, I think they are way, way underpaid for not only what we require of them just to apply in their education, but also what they do and the importance of their job and the, the workload that they handle. There are agencies, there are counties around, and we all have heard of this, but I'm, I know firsthand, that just don't prosecute certain crimes just because they can't, because the workload is too great. There are certain agencies that, you know, somebody steals a car, well, it's only his first or second, until he steals his fifth car, we don't touch it. That's just crazy. And it gets that way because people don't understand the importance of the prosecutor's office and having the people in place to prosecute these people. And I think it's the little things that count. I mean, there's all, there's always the murders, you know, that we talk about them, those are the big deals. But it's a little, you let the guy get away with stealing a car after car after car, it just escalates after that. You let the petty theft get away with petty theft, it just escalates after that. You let the drug addict get away with just selling a couple, you know, a, a couple bags of, of whatever he's selling, you know, it gets, it gets worse and worse after that. We got to pay attention to the little stuff. We got to prosecute, be aggressively prosecuting, I think, aggressively arresting and prosecuting the little things, the minor things. But to do that, and most counties are seeing the issue with this, is that costs money. It costs money to incarcerate people, it costs money to prosecute people, it costs money to put, to, to just take a case to trial. It's so much easier and so much cheaper to dispel out a case in the variety of different ways they can do it than to take it to trial. And it all revolves around money. But the most important, or the most, not the most important, but the most expensive thing we have in government, and the most important thing we have in government, is public safety. And we have to understand, it costs money to have a safe community. And so, I guess I just want to say that I'm completely in support of the prosecutor's office and the need to fund the prosecutor's office to a level that, not that we're paying the employees what they, they should make. And I know we're talking about a salary study, which will hopefully help that, but I think that's important to think, not only in this budget, but, but as we move on down the years, that we, we can't, this is just a one-time deal. Public safety is a constant issue that we have to focus on, and it costs a lot of money. And you want somebody with the Juris Doctorate degree to come and work for you, you're going to have to pay them for that value that's in that degree, so that we don't have people, first of all, they have people apply, and they wouldn't have people to apply, and once you train them up a little bit, they walk out the door for a more lucrative job. Now, certainly, we're not going to make attorneys rich in the county, work at the county level, but we can make them a little bit more, pay a little bit more equitable and, and value them through pay a little bit better. So, I think that's important to keep in mind. I don't know how that works into this budget. I, I like the idea that you're adding an assistant prosecuting attorney. However, being the fastest-growing, one of the fastest-growing counties in, in the state, and we've had this discussion before, we need to look across the board at everything, you know, and particularly public safety, that has to grow with this fast-growing county. You know, as we grow fast, crime grows fast. Crime will pick up. There's going to be more people that are, that are breaking the laws. We get more people here, there will be more prosecutors that need to handle those cases. Otherwise, we get to the point where, you know, we don't have enough prosecutors. We can't, we can't handle any cases that, with, we can't handle a theft that's worse than 50, less than $50,000. If they didn't take more than $50,000 from you, we're not going to handle that case. There are agencies that do that, there are counties that do that. We don't want to get there, and, and once you get there, it's too far to, it's too hard to backpedal from that. So, I think it's important that we, that we have the support financially for the prosecutor's office, both in salary and in, in the, the other different things that he talks about here that he needs, you know, the, the fileless system, things like that, which, which, which helps, which helps in, in man-hours as well, person-hours. So, I'm in full support of, of you and your office and what you do. I appreciate what you do. I want to encourage that we, that we have very aggressive prosecution. Obviously, you're an elected official, I can't tell you what to do, but that's just my, my hope, is that we have very aggressive prosecution from your office and that you get the support that you need from us financially to staff that office and to make sure that we're prosecuting criminals the way they should be prosecuted, so that we don't end up like some of those other counties that are just reaping a lot of, a lot of bad things because of public safety. Matter of fact, I'll tell you right now, it's, it's no secret that one of the things that's attracting, and we've had these conversations with the Royals, is the Royals say, we like how safe it is in Clay County. We like how, we liked public safety in Clay County, we like how safe it is there. Safety brings a higher return on investment for any business. That's important, and that return on investment comes back to the county as well. So, I know I've been talking a little about this for a long time, but, but that's important to me, and it's important that we, that we support the prosecutor's office, everything from, I think, the prosecutor himself, whether it's Zach or anybody else who runs for office next time around or, or down the road, we need to pay the prosecutor what they deserve to be paid, and the people that work for him in his office for what they deserve to be paid. So, with that, I, I want to thank you and, and your folks for what they do, and just know that you, you always have my support as long as I'm on this commission. And I encourage the other commissioners to, to support that office as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your words.
Commissioner Lawson, I believe you are seeking recognition.
Did I hit this one?
Oh, yeah, hit the, the new mic. Yeah, that's the one. There you go.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for coming and giving us that information. I kind of echo what Commissioner Johnson just said, and that this are, we know that, that safety is a high priority, and, and it's been for all of us. In Clay County, I always felt like I was in the safest place in the world, living in Clay County. This number of murder cases shocks the hell out of me, frankly. I, I'm, I'm amazed. I just haven't maybe been listening to the news enough or something, but, but it just all plays into the fact that we need to bone up our sheriff's department, we need to work hard on the prosecutor, because once you get them, you know, if, if it, we don't want to let those people back out, I guess, is what I'm saying, and that may be a bad way to look at it, but, but we've got to be strong on crime because, now, frankly, whether the Royals come or not is not life affecting to me, but the whole issue of them coming here was the safety in Clay County versus what they faced in Jackson. And, and now it kind of blew my mind when I, I heard that number of murders. So, anyway, thank you for what you do, continue the good work. We are, I certainly am very supportive of your office and do anything I can to help you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I don't see any indicated on my screen, I don't see any motions, so, thank you very much.
Good morning. Deetta Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. And I'd like to talk to you about our new team, the Administrative Services Team, was created this year, and it encompasses a lot of the departments that were formerly led by elected officials. And those departments include the county clerk, the collector, the recorder of deeds, and we've added GIS in the coming year to our team. And as was previously mentioned, the formulation of this team has created a fantastic opportunity to collaborate and to help serve the citizens of Clay County much better and much more efficiently, because we're breaking down the walls of the silo, and we are evaluating our processes to eliminate some of the redundancies. Having said that, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some of the budget. You see that the county clerk's budget was reduced by fourteen point seven percent. I like to deal with real numbers, and that real number is fifty-six thousand nine thirty-three. And what that is, is a position that was moved, the accounts payable position, was moved from the county clerk's office into, just under the Administrative Services Officer, so that we are gonna have a financial team. That person actually works at the Quick Building, so they're in closer contact with the treasurer's office, so that the, the processing of the POs and things like that is more efficient. The collector is a minor reduction, and that is a budget that includes not only the general fund revenue, but the other accounts that come into the collector's office. The recorder of deeds, some of that is, some of that reduction is the contribution to the GIS team, because they work so closely together. GI, recorder's office feeds the information to the GIS staff to then utilize those records and preserve those records in electronic format so they are usable for citizens within the county. Purchasing is working towards accreditation, so you see a small increase there. That is for additional training and certification, so that we can become an accredited procurement department. The newly formed Administrative Services Team, information technology, you see a pretty big jump there, and what that is, is accumulation of some of the, some of the software from the other departments, civic clerk, uh, this is MS, um, three sixty-five. It is some of the department switches that we are on a plan to continually change out and be proactive, so that we're not left with a, an oops, we don't, we didn't plan ahead and have a replacement for that piece of equipment. So they're proactively looking at that and making sure that we have the funds to accommodate that. And then GIS, our brand-new, uh, department. Some of our accomplishments for 2023 is the collector's office, eight thousand two hundred and eight additions, changes, and recordings. And what that means is that when an individual, when you change the information on a personal property document or real estate, that's done in the assessor's office. And currently, again, since we're siloed, that is done in the assessor's office. A copy is made, and it is hand-carried or faxed over to the collector, and then they have to re-enter that information. We are working towards a more collaborative way of doing things, but at this point, that's the way they function. Collector also was able to, um, distribute over nine hundred seventy-six million dollars. We've conducted a vendor performance report, and we have the enhanced GIS collaboration, where we're taking a, a team member from Highway and from Planning and Zoning, they're coming under the GIS team to benefit from all of the training and experience from the team that was already existing. They will stay embedded, you've heard this, they will stay embedded in their original assignments, Highway will stay there, and Planning and Zoning's GIS staff will stay in their offices, but the training and coordination will exist in the GIS department. Um, we are continually evaluating processes to reduce and eliminate the redundancies. I think the biggest benefit of this is that we've actually had conversation, and that's the comment that I've heard. They're actually talking to each other, and they're finding out, if I do A, that means B occurs in my office. And they didn't understand how their actions impacted the other departments. And that's been really exciting, because they, they figure it all out. Our staff gets together and figures it out, and they make the suggestions about how to better improve citizen service. That's reflected in employer of choice, the Administrative Services Collaborative Meetings. We do management training, and they all have laptops, so that they can work remotely if they need to, if they need to collaborate in another person's office. Our goals for 2024, we are looking at subscription-based recorder of deeds access, acquire the software that's needed to complete our collaboration across departments, something that will function for a multitude of the departments and not individualized software, that we then have to try and figure out how to make it talk to each other. Establish online payments for GIS. Explore additional billing, collection, and distribution systems. Digitize records, a variety of, of things that are going to require a lot of time, a lot of effort, and getting down into the nitty-gritty. The biggest one is the software. The Senate Bill 190, prepping for that, and making sure that we have everything, um, that we can possibly think of, accounted for. And so that takes time, and it takes evaluation by our staff. Um, and that is in the proactively evaluate the hardware. We are converting from static servers to virtual servers, which enhance our security with Microsoft three sixty-five. And we are strengthening capabilities and accessibility to the GIS. Any questions?
I don't see any questions. Are there any, any comments? Please, please proceed.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Whittington, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
She can go first.
Okay.
Okay, just one question. Go back to your administrative service functions.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe I didn't, I apologize if I didn't, uh, catch this. But is it a individual leaving the county clerk's office to go into another that is causing the reduction in their proposed money for 2024?
There was, the accounts payable clerk was assigned to the county clerk, and it's just that that, that money has been, they're still in the Administrative Services, they're now in the Administrative Services line, um, in that hundred and eighty-five six thirty.
Okay.
So they're still within our team, it's just it's not under the clerk.
Now, does she need to replace that person?
That person's doing the same thing, um, in the Administrative Services that she was doing there, so at this point, no.
Does it diminish your staff in any way?
Okay, okay, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yeah, you had mentioned savings by moving from physical servers to virtual. I know I asked, uh, Director Shaw about this. Sometime, can we get, whenever you have the numbers, can you present those to the commission on how much you guys actually have saved by moving to that?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, thank you, 'cause every time I ask, uh, Director Shaw, he says he doesn't have that data yet. But I, I mean, I know we're gonna save money by going from physical, uh, to virtual, but I think it'd be great for the entire commission to see that, just so they know that by moving to three sixty-five and moving to a virtual cloud-based, uh, infrastructure, that we're actually seeing, uh, savings on that investment, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would object, so if the commission wants to take an actual rate at some point, would now be a good time?
That's fine with me. I mean, if everybody's okay with that, right now, it is roughly ten minutes after the hour. Um, I generally say ten minutes, we always go over. So do we want to, is it okay just to come back at half past?
Well, you can ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay, we'll say ten minutes. We will reconvene at twenty minutes after the hour or thereabouts. Thank you. We'll stand at ease.
I'm sorry.
We are, Administrator, go ahead and tell us where we're picking up or whoever, and then we'll go ahead and, just for the sake of those who are watching, know where we're at on the agenda.
Yes, thank you for the break. So, we're going to pick up with the Employee Relations Group. Again, this is part of the General Fund. And Director Callahan is here to talk about the Employee Relations Budget.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR Director. Okay, we're looking at, the biggest change for the budget, the proposed budget, is in Human Resources. It's an increase of 36% because we're asking for a compensation and classification study to be done in '24. And I've heard a lot of people talking about that, and I'll get into a few more details in a minute. Also, in the General Fund and Benefits, there's a 7% increase. That's the cost of benefits that were increased this year. So, the 23 accomplishments. Well, we initiated 49 wellness programs with a 30% average participation among the employees. We implemented an employee recognition program that align with core values. And we're going to be doing that every year. And you remember giving out the awards. A lot of employees just appreciate being recognized. And it's something that we can do and say, "Thank you. We appreciate your hard work." It's something good for us to do. Mia, I'll turn. So, as employer of choice, we want to do a, conduct a pay classification and compensation study. And you've heard a lot of the other departments talk about it. And the money we're asking for, we will put it out to bid. You know, so, you know, we're asking for $250,000, but it may not come in at that. We want to, this year, provide onsite counseling. I'm excited about that. That'll be through our EAP program. And we're looking at starting that in either March or April. And we're still looking for an office that we're going to have that in, but we're going to use something that we have. We're going to update our orientation and onboarding programs. And we're going to try to reduce our time to fill positions. Things are getting better, and we are filling positions sooner. And we're getting, but we still are lagging behind as far as the compensation and competing with outside, especially the private sector right now. And that's what I have. Do you have any questions for me?
On the pilot program with Liberty High School, is that connected to the CAPS program?
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. That was something that I, you know, I'm glad to hear that we're taking advantage of. And that's something that, of course, is fairly universal throughout Clay County, North Kansas City, and other schools participate. I'm sorry. I'm using an acronym, CAPS. It's Center for Advanced Professional Studies. It's a program that was instituted by the Clay County EDC, and then it was in partnership with the school district. So, that was kind of where I was going with that.
Okay.
And actually, I would note that we just posted on social media, part of the CAP internship was working with our tourism and marketing. And so, they put together a program to recognize and encourage our citizens to support our local small businesses. And so, you may see that on social media. A little bit of a contest to, you know, shout out to local business that they've shopped at, maybe even showing a picture. And so, then there's a drawing similar to what we've done with other incentives on tourism. And so, that is all the creation of our interns through the CAP program.
And obviously, if you've got interns coming in through that program or other programs, that kind of gives you an idea, not only a stream to bring in new employees, but also those possible applicants would have a work record and a history with the county. So, you would be hiring, should that be the case, when they get old enough, you would be hiring in people where you have a high level of confidence in how they perform in the workplace.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Withington, I believe you were the first one in to seek recognition?
Yeah. Have we thought about, you mentioned the community colleges, but have you thought about that internship, going to Park University or UMKC that offer MPA programs and trying to get MPA students for internships?
Right. That's what our recruiter is working on right now. That's one of our goals for next year. We just started with the high school. That was the easiest way. But there's a lot involved, and she is working on working with those specific colleges.
Yeah, because I'd like to see us get some MPA, you know, students in here. I know Kansas City, what do they have? They have the Cooking Ham Fellowship or something like that. You know, something like that. To get some, so those MPA people can have experience. But then also, you said, "Reduce timeframe to fill vacancies." I went to the movies the other day, and I saw my bald head on the, on the big screen with the rest of you guys. Is that helping?
Well, it just started on Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
It just came out. And we're just playing it over the holidays.
I went to see Napoleon, and this whole group was on the big screen.
Did you like it?
Well, I didn't realize it until Mia said, "There's your bald head." But I saw that in the Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
Yeah.
They have one they run year-round. And so, we had some money left in advertising, and we're like, "Let's get one together and get it out there."
Okay, yeah, I didn't know it was a new thing. I just didn't know if that was, hopefully it helps.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Lawson, you are next to be recognized.
Thank you very much. I was just kind of shocked at something. Maybe, you know, I'm not a expert as you are, but 971 applications resulting in 81 hires? Wow. What do you attribute that to?
Well, anyone can go in and apply. I mean, you mean, why was the hiring so low? Is that what you're?
Yeah, well.
You know?
Yeah. Maybe it's because we do a really great background, and we're very selective in who we take is part of it. But then also, you know, maybe we're not paying enough, so that's another portion of it.
I mean, we screen a lot of applications, and it depends on the position. We have a clerk position in the prosecutor's office right now. She's had it up for a week and a half, and there's been 81 applications. So, but for the operator one, we get maybe five applications a year because they have to have a CDL and da-da-da-da-da. So, it depends on the position. So, but overall, yeah, we're looking at a lot of applications. And then, after screening and interviewing, that's the amount that we ended up hiring.
Well, the other question I have was, I was looking at your, the money portion of it, Human Resources. As I was scrutinizing my giant book that Diana gave us, as I went into Human Resources in accounting and consulting services, classification and compensation, there was an item for $250,000 on there.
That's the proposal for the compensation study.
Okay.
That, we didn't have that last year. That's proposed.
Okay.
And like I said, we're going to put it out for bid. So, that doesn't mean that's what it'll cost. But that's, if that's what you're looking at, yeah.
And so, just for a little bit of clarification for the Commission. So, you may recall in the 23 budget that we're currently in, and you know, Kip is up next to talk about planning and zoning, you'll see a big reduction in his department's budget because we have funded in the budget this year $250,000 for the comprehensive plan study with the consultant. And so, that won't be in his budget next year. And so, we then want to reallocate those same funds in 2024 to pay for the compensation and classification study. And I know Kim and her team have done some preliminary testing with consultants to see what do they think that it would charge, and that's probably the ballpark. We know some of the agencies, Liberty, I believe. I know Smithville just did a classification and compensation. So, many of the municipalities around us have done them. And while that is a big-ticket item, it is probably going to be close to that number. But as Kim said, we'll go out to bid and find the best consultant that will do that. But it's a pretty comprehensive job. It's not just looking at a job title and looking at a survey and determining what the salary range should be, right? It is really looking at roles and responsibilities of all our jobs. We have over probably close to 380 job descriptions, different jobs in the community, in our organization, that the consultant will be charged with looking at and trying to find comparables in the market. And where is our salary range compared to those that we're competing against in the market? Some of our positions are private sector. So, they'll also be charged with looking at private sector and taking that into consideration along with public sector wages for those jobs because we compete with the private sector for a number of our types of jobs. It's also looking at benefits. So, it'll be looking at the total rewards package. So, you know, we've added paternity leave. Well, how does our vacation and sick leave and all that compare to everybody else? You know, how do we get more individuals interested in coming to work for Clay County? So, that'll be part of it besides what is the pay structure? And how should we be evaluating employees? And do we do more of a pay-per-performance versus just cost of living? And so, there are all sorts of things that this whole study will look at about what does the county's compensation and classification program look like.
Well, you know, here's my thought on it. And maybe I live in a fool's paradise, and obviously I do. But I look at this $250,000. You know, if we're in the plan, there is the plan to join MAC, and we've got Mid-America Regional Council. And I can't believe, I did get the information from Mid-America Regional Council on what all their study involves. It's not as in-depth as you'd want it to be, absolutely. But I think in combination with MAC and some of the information they can provide us for Missouri Association of Counties all over the state, I would, I would take somebody, get out your computer and tell me, when we do chip and seal at $25,800 and something for a mile of chip and seal, how many roads can we chip and seal for $250,000? And it's probably quite a few. And I don't know, 10? I'm not good at math, but just off the top of my noodle, that's what I'd think about it. That's a lot, a lot. And we're getting some other money, I see, in that's going to assist it as well. I, in good conscience, as the person that the people put here to make decisions, I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve $250,000 for a study, no matter what, if you held a gun to my head. I just think that that's excessive. And like I say, I'm not out there in the real world right now looking at that, those studies. So, I know that there's something in between. And before I would approve it, I would want something way considerably less or free. Free is really good, but that's a huge amount of money. So, just my thoughts for what they're worth.
I can appreciate that.
Commissioner Johnson? Thank you, sir. Mike, working okay?
There we go. Let's see, yeah, that is a lot of money, $250,000. That's a lot of horses we could buy with $250,000. Maybe some county horses with that money. But, you know, I have done some of those, been involved with some salary surveys in my prior job, and I know they are expensive. And the ones we did, we'd bring them back, and then we'd actually have the employees kind of review them and be able to submit, I don't know what the term was, but basically, they say, "No, this isn't a comparable job to what I do," that kind of thing. Is that kind of what you'd expect?
Right.
So, it's kind of a lot, there's a lot of back and forth going on with the E's and that kind of stuff.
Absolutely, that's what they examine, yes.
I know it's a lot of work, a lot of hours put into those.
It is by the consultant. And I would say currently, you know, we are in preparation for this because we believe that it is definitely needed. The last pay plan was adopted in?
2008.
2008 is the last time that we've actually had a pay plan and compensation and classification system looked at. And so, it has evolved over the years, and I will say it has evolved not necessarily in the best way. So, we have inequities internally. It does take a lot of time by the consultant, but in preparation for that, we've been asking all our managers and directors to start looking at their job descriptions now and make sure that they're up-to-date and current because that will be given to the consultants. But they're still going to have to go through, as I said, we have 541 full-time positions. We have 375 different job descriptions to go for. And again, it is more complicated, and you can't say, "Well, I'm going to look at an Operation One for Clay County and then go look at a salary survey through MARK," because I've used MARK before. It's a great tool through the year to do a test, but it's not really sufficient enough to do a compensation study. But I then have to, I can't really compare my Operator One to Kansas City's Operator One without looking at the job description, say, "What are the roles and responsibilities?" It's a little bit easier in law enforcement when you have, an officer does similar job duties and functions and roles and responsibilities, or a sergeant or a captain. But when you start getting into an Operator One versus an Operator Two, we may require a lot more certification for our Operator Twos, and where we should be looking at an Operator Three at another organization. um, and where we should be looking at an operator three at another organization that is comparable in salary. That takes a lot of staff time, and we don't have the staff expertise nor the capacity in our staff to make that happen and do it correctly.
Yeah, and, and when I say I've done some of these salary studies, it wasn't just in law enforcement. It's actually citywide and the city that had as many or more employees than we have in the county. So I know it's, it's almost one of those necessary evils that we have to spend money on is, hopefully when we get, we go to bids, they're able to explain in detail why it's going to cost however much it is they're, they, they want to, they want to charge. But I think it goes back to, you know, we, we talk about our employees and paying our employees what they deserve and, and getting them to a level that they should be, and we need to know what that level is and we've got to be sure of it. I know what some cities and counties do is they'll, in the short term, they'll just, they'll just give somebody a new title just so they can give them more money, which are really not working under that title or, or that description or whatever. So that, that convolutes a lot of things as well. Um, so yeah, the, actually the, the more important question I had, and everyone seems to be focusing on this pilot internship program. I see that you launched the, the pilot at Liberty High School. Are you planning on doing any other high schools?
Uh, we're actually working on the colleges right now.
Okay, so it's probably, probably get a better candidate pool from the colleges if you get in the colleges.
I mean, that's, but we can certainly expand it and I can never.
Well, whatever you think's best. I'm not saying you need to. I'm just letting you know there's a lot of other high schools that we could expand too if, if that, if it worked, but, but maybe the better idea is to focus on college-level folks. It might be better employees for us, um, coming out of college with degrees. Just, if you don't know, and I'm, I'm sure you do, but at the high school level, the high school has the A-plus program, you know, but, but part of the A-plus program, they have to get a certain amount of community service hours, which I don't know if we're part of that or not, but we allow, do we allow high schoolers to come to get community service hours, working for us somehow in some capacity?
It's not something that we have set up right now that we can certainly.
That's good. That could be an option. If, I don't know, I can't remember how many hours they need and it's just going to be a short time, but, but I know my daughters, both my daughters worked at, um, elementary schools as, as teacher, teachers' aides, you know, so if you want some, you know, people want some aides in their, in their office to do some, you know, some gopher work or something, it's, like I said, everybody has to have a certain amount of community hours to get the A-plus, and that's the majority, I think, of the high school kids that are trying to get that. So it's something we might want to be able to tap into if we can, if it's something that'll work for you. I'll let you decide that. Um, and let's see, what was the other question? Actually, I'll save my other question for another point in time here. Thanks.
And one thing I wanted to add on the workers' compensation study is, uh, once they give us the, the plan, they are also going to help us implement it because we're not going to be able to make a change the very next year. So that's going to be part of the person that we would choose if we get to is, okay, you can give us this and then how are we going to implement it? How are we going to make the changes? So that'll be a big part of it.
And, and approving that in this budget doesn't mean that we approved this to happen. It's still, they're still have to bring the bid before us or the selection before, and we will, we'll have a time to approve whether, whatever that final cost is, or whether or not we want to go through with it and get more details at that time.
Just a quick, I'd add on question to, to follow up on what Commissioner Johnson was saying. If we put that amount of money into the budget, that is up to that amount unless we as a commission approve it, and it certainly can go below that amount. Uh, that's just kind of the, what we are projecting is the top dollar figure if I'm not mistaken.
Right, that's, it's a budget number, right? It's an estimate. And so again, that bidding process will, um, you know, will be reviewed and a recommendation will come before the commission and certainly outline what's the scope of that one, right? And so, um, if it comes in, we hope it comes in under less than two hundred and fifty, as we hope all our projects come in under budget.
Would be nice. Commissioner Withington, you are next up.
Uh, Jay, it's forty hours for A-plus? Yeah, but, uh, I'd follow up, uh, is that three hundred and eighty unique positions that we have? Or is there, that seems like a lot for our organization.
Well, I would agree, and we need to collapse that.
Well, so I was going to say, so like if somebody in the collector's office has the same job function as somebody that in the, you know, the, uh, auditor or assessor's office, are those two different job titles or can those be collapsed into one job title?
Right, so current, which, what has happened over the years, right? So you could have a clerk title, and typically what you have is a clerk one, two, and three. And it's, you know, a job description is not to give detailed day-to-day what my function, it's more of, what is the big picture? What are the roles and responsibilities? And, and so people should fit within a clerk one, two, or three, and that could be in the collector's office, the clerk's office, the auditor's office, they're in that particular category. Now, it doesn't mean that, that department doesn't have sort of a description of what your day-to-day functions are.
Yeah, that's what I was.
But I would agree with you. That's why the whole system needs to be completely, it's a little out of hand.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was getting at. You know, when I was at Cerner, we, we had a lot of unique job titles and, you know, for an enterprise of thirty-five thousand, but, uh, then they condensed those down, and that's kind of what I was going to get at was if we're asking our directors to go through or managers to go through and look at their job descriptions, can we start also looking at condensing those down?
I, I would say that would be, that's really the, hopefully the function of the consultant.
Yeah.
Um, because again, it has who's the staff capacity to look at.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that this was part, that would have been, would be part of, if we're going to spend two hundred and fifty K on this, if.
So we kind of have a preliminary whole scope.
Okay, okay.
Of what we're going to be asking the consultant to do. So it's really, it is really about designing a completely different pay structure and pay plan, and then how do we implement going forward?
Okay.
Because what happens over the years, which has happened to us and it happens to every organization, is somebody will create a new position or they'll want to reclassify an existing position. And so we've not really had the protocols in place. How do you manage that? And it's just sort of happened over the years, which is why we have some internal equity issues across the organization, and we want to rectify that.
Yeah, so that's what I was, that's kind of what I was getting at because this seems like the, the perfect opportunity to just not do a pay plan, but to do a whole re-categorization the way the entire enterprise has, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, including all, even in our office holder position, the sheriff's office, every position in the entire organization will be looking.
Yeah, if we're going to make that investment, I think this is the best time to do that. All right, thank you, guys.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, well, I'm still not buying it, but that's okay. Uh, the, here, here's the, uh, here's the bottom line. I'd like us to very carefully scrutinize, uh, studies. If they've been done, they may not have been done, but recent studies done by MAC and MARK and at the beginning of the year, if our people are going in to their departments and saying, "Okay, for this department, here's our jobs, you know, here's, here's the functions" or "however you're going to do it," and, uh, and, and they're going to give us that information. I just, I, I think this is overkill. So, um, while I understand it's an in-depth study, I mean, it really is. Um, nevertheless, I think that that money can be utilized better somewhere else. And, and I want to see our people get what they deserve. But you know, I look at the police or the sheriffs, uh, I got to say, it's not, you can't say sheriff's department anymore. The sheriff's office, you have to look at the sheriff's office. And we have to say that he came to us and said, "In Platt County, they're doing this. In Ray County, they're doing this," you know, and he has a lot of different functions within his department. And he was able to say, "This is what I need for my people." Now, if he's intelligent enough to do that, I don't understand why that can't be done in each department in the same manner. "Oh, I talked to Platt County and this is theirs. I talked to, you know, whatever." I realize it's a little bit of work for them, yeah, but he was willing to do it and give us the result. I don't see why the others can't. But regardless, I say we look at those two organizations, see what they have done, if it's something that we can utilize. If it isn't, then it goes out to bid and we get the lowest and the best, but two hundred and fifty is way in the hell out there. So anyway, that's just my thought.
So, um, just a couple of items on that. Uh, yes, the sheriff did do, um, sort of benchmark in the region, but again, really, he's talking about four to five positions, right? Um, he's talking about his deputy, he's talking about his sergeant, and then sort of going up. It's a little bit easier than across the organization. The other thing is, you, you, it is not in the county's best interest to look at a pay and classification system in silo by department because then you run into issues about, you know, do I have a clerk in one office who is at a different pay grade, but doing the same roles and responsibilities as somebody else? Um, and so you don't want to look at it on an individual basis, but as an organization basis. Certainly, we participated in MARK's survey last year. I have done them for years. I will say a little bit with a, with a MARK survey, in any survey, is the data is as good as the person that puts in the data. Um, and in addition to that, while we will look at what MAC has, it's on a state basis, and typically when you do a comp study, you are looking at your immediate, who are you competing against? So I don't know that we're competing for a highway employee with Cape Girardeau, right? Um, we do compete with Platt County, Jackson County, Johnson County, Kansas, Cass County. So those are our competitive with certain jobs. So I'm not sure that the MAC survey will really be of a benefit to us when it looks at, at market data. Um, but certainly MARK's information will be one of the tools that will be used.
Did you have any further? That conclude? Okay. Uh, something I, I want to point out is I think Commissioner Johnson made an excellent point when the prosecuting attorney was up, and that was that, that office doesn't just compete with the prosecuting attorney in Platt or in Ray or in Jackson County. Uh, but that is the entire, but it also, he is in competition with the private sector. Uh, unlike the sheriff, there's not as much there going on as far as pri- I mean, our, as private security, clearly. But it's not nearly the same kind of competitive atmosphere, and I'm not entirely sure that, that the studies that we've talked about that were either free or at least somewhat available to us at some level, uh, I, I'm not entirely sure that they include private sector, which is going to be very important when we're talking about something outside of law enforcement where we are in more direct competition with, uh, with private businesses.
That's correct. MARK's salary survey does not include any private data. I will say, if, if prosecutors, and a, a prime example of competing with attorneys, accountants, CPAs, administrative staff, um, you know, when we're talking about clerks and support staff, can certainly work with private sector, the public sector. So that is an important piece that we want to bring into the study, um, to, again, when we analyze what does the market look like when we're competing to get those, you know, talent to come up with.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, I, I don't know if you, if your mic was left on or if you want to be recognized again.
I mean, I always like being recognized, but I didn't.
I recognize you. I know you. I, I've seen you before. I know who you are. But if you'd like to speak, you're, you have nothing else to add? Okay. Um, I see no further comments, so unless you have something you'd like to conclude with, thank you very much.
I just appreciate all your support throughout the year.
Thank you.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. Uh, so our twenty-three budget was roughly eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. Twenty-four budget, five hundred and fifteen thousand. Diana kind of stole my thunder. Um, big portion of that is, is the comprehensive plan that we're currently, uh, working on. That's two hundred and fifty thousand of that difference. Uh, also, my GIS technician is getting transferred to the new mapping department, which I think is a good change, and then we've requested a little bit less in our engineering funds because we don't have a whole lot of projects hanging out there that are going to need engineering review. So that's the biggest difference in our budget, uh, this year. So a couple accomplishments, obviously, starting the update to the comp plan is a big one. We also did a massive, uh, revision to the land development code that streamlined our cases, aligned, uh, our processes with the new state statutes we're following. Um, and a couple goals, uh, for twenty-four include completing and adopting the comp plan. Uh, we'd also like to adopt a newer version of the building codes and also work with all the jurisdictions within Clay County to be on the same version of the building codes. And then as part of the ARPA funds, we have a permitting software that's being built that we are planning on implementing that and starting to use that in the first quarter, uh, next year. So between the comp plan, um, the building codes and that new software, our kind of, our, our plate will be full along with the, our daily duties that we do, as long as, you know, building permits, planning cases, all that stuff. So that's kind of a brief summary of our budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure the mic's still worked. Um, no, there's a question. Uh, I, I am intrigued by your column under economic opportunity and, um, curious to know if you have identified those commercial opportunities in unincorporated sections of Clay County. I will always speak that the airports are natural, but that may not be what you've identified. Just curious to know.
So actually, yesterday we had the, was the start of the two-day planning charrette with the comprehensive plan, and some of that was discussed, uh, yesterday. Um, I see, personally, I see the ninety-two corridor and the sixty-nine highway corridor as possible commercial, uh, development areas, but the comp plan will help us with that as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donna Coons, Deputy County Administrator. And I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so I apologize for my voice today. Um, just wanted to, let's see if I want to go back one. Sorry, went too many slides there. It's tough to follow planning and zoning when they just showed a decrease in their budget, and I get to come forward and show that we have a slight increase in our budget for 2024. And going last, a lot of the things I'm going to say, you've already heard, but just as a reminder, some of those things that are occurring is because we are transferring postage and copier expenses that have been either scattered throughout various departments or they have been under one other area is moving forward into facilities. Just to give you a couple of quick little examples, uh, copiers was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and postage was seventy-five thousand dollars. So just to put a couple of little numbers there to kind of explain our thirty-one percent increase. And really, the largest part of the increase is because, excuse me, we are looking at doing, um, studies for future needs for both our detention facility and for the Rooney Justice Center. Uh, and again, anytime we do those studies, um, they, they come at a dollar price and, and that nice two hundred and fifty thousand dollars price tag keeps jumping up again. Some of the accomplishments that we have done this year. Um, and again, uh, the other departments have already spoke, but, um, and we're very happy that we're able to assist the departments like this with our prosecutor redoing their lobby with, um, to, to create that barrier from the public back into their space with ballistic glass, uh, creating a new exit and a security system for the Children's Justice Center. Uh, we have been able to do, um, some painting in detention, uh, within the actual cell areas, which has not been done for quite a while. Uh, one of the biggest things for that is that there are, there are upper and lower tiers. Uh, we're able to put, um, paint grip surfaces for stairs and shower floors, which are a critical need. Um, one complete, um, as we refer, tank was able to be repainted this year, which was F-tank. It was in the worst condition of any of the areas in the detention. Our facilities department won the Team Collaborative Award this year, which was the first year this has been offered, but we were very proud of that. Um, especially Ben's, we have two shifts, and I don't know that a lot of, uh, some of you are newer commissioners, know that my department operates two shifts. Uh, we have primarily our day shift, which is heavily on our maintenance. We do have what we refer to as a day porter that does a combination of custodial and mail operations. And then we have our night shift, which is our night custodians that come in at five o'clock at night and work till one-thirty AM, and then we always have a maintenance person on call. So to be able to have two shifts, two very different operations, and people operating on-call and running in and out of departments all day long, we were very proud to have received that award. And, uh, we're very honored that we were even nominated for that. Uh, some of our infrastructure projects we've been working on has been, uh, painting, and we didn't really, uh, go through everything, but, um, painting included, um, the second floor here of the administration building. the administration building. It included the exterior of the Schrader Building. We did painting at the girls' home, interior of the Schrader Building as well, and the top floor of the Rooney Justice Center, which, again, has not been something that's been done very, throughout time, we've kind of lacked on some of our infrastructure. We did complete our north door, new doors here. We've had one door not operating for almost two years downstairs, so we're very happy that we also got that project done. And we have been changing out the lights for the prosecutor's area to a LED, an energy-efficient type lighting system. And because of the intensity and the constant computer work, we needed to address some of their needs for that area of, to reduce the eye strain and to meet some of the things they had. We also completed a lot of roof projects. And again, I have to say thank you to the commissioners for funding infrastructure this year. You know, roofs are kind of the, a key point to preventing damage into any building. And the fact that we were able to do boys' and girls' homes, our highway sign shop, which was, had a bad leak that was damaging an expensive piece of equipment that needed to be taken care of, and our 201 maintenance building was also taken care of this year. One of the other things, and Janet Rogers did speak to it, was a lot of our upgrades at the group homes, which has, as she said, to meet Priya, has been needing to be done for a long time and for various other reasons. The card access system was one of the key things to be able to determine who was coming and going and at what times for them. And some of our goals for next year, again, we want to, we've already discussed the centralized billing. We have some additional upgrades coming on at Children's Justice. This is going to be in addition of additional cameras. And we have been working on prosecutor's office and Rooney Justice for some ballistic glass. Children's Justice has also asked if that could be a consideration for them next year. So that is one of the things we've proposed in our budget to do upgrades for them, especially in their lobby area. We have also asked to increase by one position next year, and that is to put a painter on staff. Many years ago, this used to be a position that the facilities department had, but with budget cuts throughout the years, that was a position that was eliminated. So we're hoping to be able to return that so that we can do more of that in-house without having to contract out for all of our painting services. We do do some of that in-house, but it's limited to basically small offices and things like that. We don't have enough staff to be painting the complete outside of buildings. And then some of our new infrastructure projects, we've already discussed, we need to do our assessments for the detention and facilities. We have HVAC projects for girls' group home, and then this building needs new hot water heaters and boilers to finish bringing this building up, up for what we have needs for that. And those are kind of some of the quick highlights of what's going on and what we're kind of asking for for next year. And I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
First off, before we go there, I just want to say congratulations on the Team Collaborative Award. We certainly are always gratified to hear when our departments and other parts of the government achieve the excellence to come to the attention of an outside entity and be given an award like that, which I am sure is very richly deserved. So first off, congratulations on that. Is there, let me light up, okay? I don't see anybody on my screen who'd like any questions or comments. Is there any commissioner who would care to comment or question? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our last team to talk about is, we've sort of called it the financial functions. And so there are two departments that we put in this particular category, well, three. The auditor's office, treasurer, and then our debt service coming out of the general fund, which, and again, you can look here at the budgets, and the 24 budget proposed for the auditor is down almost 9%. And you've kind of heard some of the reasoning. One of the reasons there is before the costs for the copier and the lease fees were in the auditor's budget, and so that's been moved to facilities. The treasurer's budget, we're recommending an increase of about 8%, and that's tied to reclassification of a part-time position in which we're recommending that that position go full-time. And then the debt service, there's no particular change in that. You look at the allocation, you can see that primarily these budgets associated with personnel costs, takes people to do these functions. Then we have certainly contractual costs, and then certainly less than 1% in commodities and capital. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Auditor Holbert to come up and talk about, you know, the accomplishments and goals for his team and also any highlights on his budget he'd like to make.
Good afternoon, Victor Holbert, county auditor. And so, yeah, accomplishments, as you can see here, again, just continuing to get this county back up to standards, nationally recognized standards as far as our financial statements and our budget and overall, all of our practices as it relates to financial accounting of transactions at the county. And so, as you recall, for our 2022 financial statements audit, we submitted that to GFOA in an attempt to get that COA award, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. County's never received that before, and so it's just a good practice that we do it. Again, the overall purpose of a lot of these awards is not just to get an award for the sake of the award, but it's to be more transparent and effectively communicate our financial statements and our budgets to the public, to the, you know, policymakers and governing board. So we submit that for the first time. Haven't heard back yet. It's a rather lengthy review process, but it's still under review. We're confident that we are going to be able to receive that one, and that would be our second award from GFOA as our budget award, which we've now received for a couple of years. And, you know, thanks to all the efforts with our current budget, we continue to make improvements every year, especially, I'll note, you know, this strategic plan really is kind of a weakness we had when we first got the award, something that reviewers said we should, you know, work on and really tie our budget to. And now we most certainly do that. So it's just going to make repeating, getting the budget award every year that much easier. And so, you know, I commend Budget Officer Wright and all the departments in working on that. And so, you know, we got that again in 2023. I want to, you know, continue the pace as far as the internal audit function with this county. You know, not only, you know, does my office have the role with the assisting with the budget and the accounting aspect, but the internal audit function, I think that's really the, you know, crucial component as the elected office holder. And, you know, there are a lot of opportunities there, and I again encourage the commission, if there's something that you want a more in-depth look at, I'm happy to, you know, consider that. Certainly, I like the flexibility as, you know, if we have the juvenile office come up with a question, I'm happy to go dive in and assist with that and be open to the taxpayers and any concern they have. But, you know, that's something I want to continue to do, at least, you know, quarterly. When I look at my peers across the state of Missouri, you know, there aren't many county auditors that even do performance internal auditing, and so it's something I think we need to continue to do, especially in Clay County and what we've been through over, you know, in recent history especially. And then I'll just point out the, you know, the 911 audit. It was something that, you know, a lot of interest from our commission of, you know, this problem we had in our budget, how can we find more funding? And, you know, as being a board, a Mark Board member, it all just kind of clicked that, you know, coming together with that audit, and we successfully took that to the voters and they approved it. And so that's something I'm, you know, really proud of to see that, you know, an audit that truly gets results. You know, sometimes you do audits, you don't necessarily, you know, see the impact from that. So that was really special to see. So I thank the commission for their support on that. As far as goals for next year, we do have an use tax fund. We have $10,000 for a barcode scanner for capital assets. Currently, we just have a physical number, and we go and, you know, physically read it with our eyes and compare it to the serial number and check it off. It's a very manual process. So I think a best practice would be, and to be more efficient in doing asset inventories, is to be, you know, going forward prospectively to just, you know, scan that asset, and that way we have an electronic audit record as far as that we have actually identified that in asset inventory. So we'll be able to do more and improve our capacity in doing that. There are a little more robust technologies as far as like RFID asset inventories. I think I'm not quite at that point yet because, you know, unfortunately, there are some risks and downsides with that. So in looking with my peer auditors, a barcode scanner, I think is the next best step, and so we'll look to implement that. I think the biggest, you know, goal and I think challenge for my office next year will be rolling out the new accounting system. A big problem we saw during COVID, and that we continue to see as far as processing payments, is the paper-based system we have with purchase orders and P-cards. You heard from our other office holder as well, the challenges with, you know, of paper-based systems. And likewise, this county can do much better with that. We've already improved a lot of electronic payment processes, but now let's do it with our accounting system. It's a mighty effort, however. It's, we're in the phase now of, you know, really looking at the data, making sure that it's accurate data before we convert it and get it into the new system. Early in the year, our goal is to have a lot of training with end-users to be able to roll this out, and our goal for a go-live date is April 1st. That way, we can clear out 2023 payment transactions and then get on to a new year, new system. So that'll be a big challenge and goal next year. As has been referenced, we have the copiers, and so I appreciate and thank the facilities department for taking that on. It makes sense to do that centrally in one department. And really, the key thing is the relationship with RICO, our provider, is really with facilities. So there's no reason for, you know, my office to kind of try and have that go-between. This is a little more direct. Again, continue with the budget and the financial statement awards for GFOA. There is one more third word, third award that I've referenced before for the Triple Crown, and that's a PAFR. It's an even more high-level, popular annual financial report, just to kind of summarize our financial statements and where the county is at for the public internal audits. And the last part, the last one, I think, is more of a treasurer goal. He's, I think, looking to move that part-time position to full-time and have a little more robust there performance, especially as it relates to investments and cash flow management. And certainly, we're working with him with the new accounting system to improve those aspects of his office as well. So that's really me in a nutshell. We're a small but mighty office, five employees, but I think, you know, do a good service through the county, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the work that you're doing. And also, I wanted to say congratulations to you and your office and everybody who's involved on the awards that you have won. I was kind of intrigued by the Triple Crown thing. I couldn't help but think of the Kentucky Derby or something like that. But certainly, we are very proud of the work that staff does in general, and certainly your office being able to come in with these awards. Once again, it's recognition. It struck me, you had mentioned that was a lengthy review process. That tells me that this isn't just, you show up and you get the award. It sounds to me like it's quite rigorous, and certainly, we want to thank you for the attention that you've paid in the performance of your duties and beyond those duties. I also want to make mention of the internal audits. That's something that, you know, I'm happy that you are there to do. That's one of the reasons why the auditor's office is elective as opposed to appointed is because that allows you, the independents, to be a watchdog for other areas of government. So we certainly appreciate the role that you play in that. And then finally, the last thing I want to mention is, you know, obviously, we serve together on the Mark Board, and I just want to say how valuable it is to have you there so that when we get, as we did the other day, we got our, the Mark budget in. And to have you there and to be able to interact with you, with your insights into budget process is incredibly valuable and, you know, certainly appreciate that. And by the way, we will be forwarding a link to the Mark budget that was proposed the other day so that the full commission has the chance to review and make any comments as we go forward. But certainly, you've been a very valuable, you know, I was going to say asset, that sounds a little wrong, but you're someone who is very valuable to this county in a couple of different areas, and we certainly appreciate that. With that, Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Auditor, for your presentation. I just want to encourage as much as possible that development of the PAFR. I think for most folks, they look at budgets, they don't understand what they're looking at. The PAFR plays a great role in at least trying to make it make sense. And so I'm assuming the objective is to develop that after this budget process is done, or what's your expectation of development of that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it will be rather tight. You know, the budget award, you have 90 days after it's adopted to submit it to the GFOA. Technically, the financial statements, you are to submit it after six months, and, you know, our audit was not complete after six months, so we did request an extension and received that. And so that's another component as to why it's, you know, still under review. The PAFR follows that same timeline, so it'll be rather tight as far as, you know, the end of June, which that is, that's what we want to aim to as far as, you know, timing of the financial statements and the budget, you know, half a year, I think, is plenty long enough to have that done. So, you know, it will be a challenge because, you know, we have examples that we've looked at, but we don't really have a, you know, template or resource to look at. But I'm confident just with what we've been able to do before, I think, and especially with, you know, to Commissioner Nolte's point, back to the criteria, it's very much less so for the PAFR. As it is for the COA, which is, you know, pages upon pages and the budget. So, I mean, basically, the criteria is, do you have one? You know, so I think, I think, you know, we, and that's not to say we're not, we're just going to, you know, not put in our full effort, but I'm confident because of that that we can get that done.
Well, again, I think it is a great tool for interacting with our public and understanding what their money goes for. So however, we can encourage your mighty team to accomplish that goal. Certainly want to do that and appreciate you putting it out there. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Well, everybody knows what a big fan I am, but I want to thank you for what you do, and I'm congratulating you on another award. That's wonderful. And the fact that you'll take the time to help other departments, like the compliment you got today, say you save the county money, but I think that they feel a little more secure in having someone within our building that does that kind of work for them. So keep doing what you're doing, and I sincerely appreciate, the biggest thing I appreciate is that anytime I have a question, I can come to you, you answer it so I can understand it, which is a real accomplishment, and that you always make, don't make me feel like a dummy when I ask the question. So thank you for all that you do for this county and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Auditor.
Well, you're on the home stretch, and so I appreciate everybody's attention this morning because I know it's been long. But this next section of the presentation is about the forecasting for the general fund. And again, looking at a budget, looking at expenditures should never be done in a vacuum and just a point in time for today or a point in time for the remainder of this year or even just for 2024. And so one of the things that we do, our due diligence is, is trying to forecast out. And at minimum, we take that out at least three years. Now, we have longer forecasts and a five-year CIP, but again, you know, the economy can change very quickly on us, but we do think it's very important to put some assumptions together to look together, um, to look down the road for the county, uh, which I think, uh, was one of the outcomes and certainly part of the auditor when he did the 911 and where we were with that and what it looked like going forward and what were some of the alternatives to try and solve some, um, what we believe was a future problem of continuing to subsidize that particular program and looking for alternatives and a revenue stream, um, to address that. So I'm not really going to spend a lot of time on this chart because I kind of talked about it before when we started in on the general fund. But this again is just sales tax information. And again, looking at our 24 proposed and then building from there, 25, 26, and 27 sort of, um, assumption of growth. And we've used again, a conservative growth in our sales tax of 5%. Again, this is just general fund revenue. Um, and, but I will caveat this, that this does not reflect any changes with the 911 device fee revenue coming in that will free up some, um, hopefully general sales tax, um, going forward. Um, so we'll certainly next year, when you take a look at this, it will look different and we'll certainly be documenting that change as to why it looks different going forward because we'll have a better understanding of what kind of revenue the 911 device fee will generate. When we look at, this is sort of all revenue streams for the general fund. Um, you can see sort of identified, um, with the code to the right. And you see the assumptions below, but again, sales tax is 5%, property tax a 3%. Uh, and these are really just looking at historical trends. Um, they can fluctuate interest, 1%. Well, actually, interest has been fairly good this year, the last couple of years prior to that, interest was not so great in income. Um, and so again, it's, it is taking some assumptions and carrying it forward. So while we look at our revenue projections for the next several years, then we also want to look at our expenditures. And so this particular chart then breaks down our expenditure categories. And you can see the assumptions that are used going forward with wages going up 3% each year, health insurance 7%, benefits 3%, utilities, commodities, contractual. And so those are the assumptions that we use based on our 2024 budget. And so then what does that look like going forward? Um, but before we get to that point, I want to go back and look at the general fund fund balance as similar that we did on a citywide or countywide basis. Sorry, said city too many years. Um, and so this is strictly just looking at the general fund, but taking that same format and that same information to show what does the 24 budget look like when it comes to operating revenues, operating expenditures, fund balance, and reserves. And so again, that same format, 2024, we're estimating that the beginning fund balance in the general fund is about $14.3 million. Our operating revenues coming into the general fund are estimated to be $35.3 million. That does include transfers coming in from other funds. Um, and then we have our expenditures. And so by the categories of personnel, contractual, commodities, and capital, and also our transfers out, right? We're making that obligation from the general fund to transfer 11 million out to other funds. So you can see our operating expenditures are $45.7 million. So if we compare our operating revenues to our operating expenditures, the general fund has a deficit of $10.3 million. Taking that from the funds available, that leaves $4 million in fund balance, which is 9% of our expenditures. But again, as we've talked about, we try to bring reality into it also and based on trend analysis. So that final column is looking at trends. And so again, beginning fund balance is the same. Operating revenues, again, we're very conservative when it comes to forecasting sales tax and some of our other revenues, but 35.3 million. But if we take the operating expenditures, again, times 82%, um, then you see that our operating expenditures are 37.4 million. That does leave a deficit for the year of $2.1 million. Now, we don't have a lot of capital, one-time expenses right now noted in the general fund. It's only 74,000. Again, thinking worst-case scenario, revenues come in less, you start deferring, deferring things and capital is one that you defer. But in that 11.6 million transferring out, um, to the law enforcement, there are capital in the law enforcement fund. So we would be collaborating to make, make sure that we have a balanced budget. Um, the other thing about that negative 2.1 million, again, remember the transfer is 990 some odd thousand to the 911 device fee. So again, we're not anticipating we will need all of that. And certainly in future years, we don't think we'll potentially need any of that. So that helps with that potential deficit that we're seeing. But if that does happen, um, with a deficit of 2.1 million using fund balance, then that would be a projected ending fund balance of $12.2 million, which is 33% of expenditures in the general fund. But I want to note, and that's why the box is there off to the right, is about the law enforcement fund. Because the law enforcement fund, when, we'll talk about that, um, next week, but it has its own dedicated sales tax. But then it also has direct sales tax coming in and general fund transferring as needed. There is no fund balance currently in the law enforcement fund. And so to make sure that we have adequate funds, we need to add in our law enforcement expenditures, um, when we're determining that fund balance of $4 million. If we add in the 28 million of expenditures for law enforcement, that brings our fund balance of expenditures from 9% to 5%. Now again, that's full budgeted expenditures. If we take 82% of the law enforcement expenditures, that's about $23.1 million. And so again, adding that to the general fund expenditures, what is the 12.2 million of reserves? And that basically would put us at 20% of expenditures. General fund, trend expenditures, and law enforcement trend expenditures. So I think it's important to make sure that we look at it from both perspectives since law enforcement does not have its own fund balance. This chart simply goes back to the revenue assumptions, the expenditure assumptions, and basically fund balance based on trend. Um, and so you'll see 23 is estimated, um, here with revenues, um, actually exceeding, projecting to be above expenditures in 2023, uh, with an estimated ending fund balance of $14.3 million. We're looking then at the 24 proposed budget based on trends, right? This is not on budget, but on trends. Um, you can see that it does drop that fund balance, as we talked about, by about $2 million. Um, and then 25, 26, and 27 is taking that same assumption in revenues and expenditures, uh, along with trends on expenditures. And so you're seeing, well, we're holding steady with the gap. There is a gap of expenditures to revenues. And so that's continuing to decline our estimated fund balance. So we, as staff, we would say to you, we need to be looking long-term about how do we, again, solve some of these issues. Now, I say that, again, the device fee revenue is not factored in here. And so that will help close that gap of revenues and expenditures and help, um, minimize the utilization of fund balance. But as we have talked about, um, and certainly and I, it was sort of on my goal this year to do, but we didn't get it done since there's only a few more weeks until the end of the year. But really want to come back and talk to the commission about some financial policies and having you establish and adopt financial policy. So what is the target for fund balance? For the different types of funds that we have? What should we be striving for? What are we comfortable with? Um, and when should fund balance be used? You know, typically you will see fund balance policies say, yes, you know, elected bodies will be comfortable using a fund balance dollar amount for a one-time item, a capital project, a capital piece of equipment, something that is not an ongoing cost because, you know, it's not sustainable. Otherwise you see this trend, which is your fund balance continues to go down. Um, but again, these are forecasts, but it is a picture to say, certainly the device 911 fee is certainly, I think, put us in a better position. But we still need to be looking at long-term of some other solutions to, to basically help with the general fund operations, which in essence is helping our law enforcement fund also. Um, so, you know, with that, um, just remind everybody the budget calendar. Um, so there is another budget workshop next Wednesday here in the commission hearing at 9:30. We will be going through the law enforcement fund. Uh, the sheriff will be here and also then going into the park fund. Um, December 13th, again, that is a Wednesday, the following week at 9:30 here in the chambers, we'll be looking and the assessor will be here. We'll talk about the assessor's budget because it is its own fund. And then spending a lot of time on road and bridge fund, a five-year CIP, and our road maintenance program. Uh, we've left December 20th as a potential for our follow-up if needed. Um, and then at the regular commission meeting on the 21st, we will do a recap of the budget and certainly any changes that have come out of the workshops, um, and try and, and make those changes and present those to you and then have the commission do deliberation with, again, adoption at January 4th. By statute, the budget must be adopted, I want to say January 10th, something like that. And so January 4th is the scheduled, um, meeting for the public hearing and the adoption. And then we certainly encourage our community to stay involved and engaged in the budget process. Um, this is being livestreamed. Uh, we will have it out on the website along with the PowerPoint presentation. Um, and so they can video, they can view the video, they can get to the data. Um, certainly we're putting information of, of what's in the budget, um, doing through social media. And we have a direct email address that will go to the budget support team. That if citizens have a particular question that they would like to send to us through email, that will come directly to the budget team and we'd be happy to answer that, uh, for the public. Um, that really concludes our presentation and our, like, 579,000 slides that we went through this morning. Um, we appreciate your due diligence and certainly want to answer any questions that you have, um, on any of the items presented about the general fund today.
Commissioner Johnson, I believe you were seeking recognition.
Thank you. So yeah, if you can go back two slides, I have a question. That one right there. The difference, uh, you see that trend line, you know, from 24 on, um, and the revenues, or the expenditures exceed the revenues. What is that difference there? Is that what, 800,000, 500,000? Do you know?
I, I do know, but I don't know. I mean, I, I'll get that for you.
I'm just looking by the, by the graph. If it's accurate to the graph, I'm guessing it's less than a million. If that's a 2 million every...
It's probably about two. Well, if you can look at what happens to fund balance. So fund balance goes from 12 to 10 million, from 10 million to 8 million, from 8 million. So it's about $2 million a year.
Okay. Um, but the gap between the red and the blue line is not, is probably more like, less than a million, right?
Yeah, it really, it, it should be, um, the same because that's in essence how we got to what the projected fund balance should be.
Okay.
And it's hard to tell on a graph.
If we could back up one more line.
Yep.
Or one more page, I mean.
Yep. No, be happy to.
So here, when we talk about, uh, budgeted and, and, uh, the trend analysis, you talk a lot about expenditures and the, um, essentially salary savings that, that you have every year, which is kind of helps make the budget.
And other categories, right.
Um, but we don't talk a whole lot about the revenues. I understand the revenues are, are very, are fairly conservative, which I appreciate and I think they should be. But just for the record, what do, what were, for this current year, do you know what the difference is roughly or what the difference? Uh, we have another month left to go.
I actually do. If you bear with me, I need to go through a few more back pages. But yeah, we, I actually have that revenue, um, on sales tax growth.
Yeah, from projection, from the original projection to what the actual, we think will be?
Right. Um, right. So, no, that's assess evaluation. So let me get to sales tax.
Are we looking for sales tax?
I think, yeah. Are you looking at the growth in sales tax?
Yeah. Or if you, if you have a number for general revenue, for all those revenue, so it's for, so next year we're projecting 35 million plus.
Yeah. Don't look at the screen, but let me go way back. It's probably going to be a clicker if I do this. If you go back to slide 14.
Uh huh. Okay.
Right? So here is sales tax. Actual in '22 was 19 million. We're estimating in '23 that we're going to bring in 19.6. And so what we have in the 24 budget is 20.6 million.
But what I'm looking for is the difference between that actual and, uh, the estimate in 2023 and the actual.
Well, 23, you, well, 23 would be year-to-date.
Right.
Are you wanting, are you wanting just the general fund, sales tax, budget, so actions to budget? Is that over?
I want to know the difference between what we estimated and what the actual was for our revenue.
For '23.
If you can figure out '23 or year-to-date '23, or if you have an, if you think you can close out, come close to closing out '23.
Yeah. So I can tell you, I mean, uh, for general sales taxes, this is a good data point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're at, uh, uh, we're currently at 32.6 million of actuals. And then, uh...
Wait, we're, oh, so we're currently for 2023 at 32.6 million in sales tax?
But that's not just all that stays in the general fund.
It's not just in general.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
So...
So for just the general fund.
You know, if you can answer that now, if it's gonna take some while, that, that's fine.
Yeah, let's get back to you on that. We can certainly, uh, because...
Well, I have it right here. So we have a budget of 17, uh, you know, 410 in the general fund. Sales taxes, we are over, uh, by 725,000. So we're currently 17, uh, 0.9 million. So we have surplus of 725,000. I brought up the, you know, the total sales taxes counted by the general sales taxes was 32.6 million. So that just goes, you know, of that, that's how much is in the general fund.
Are you including use tax in that as well?
No.
Okay, use tax is separate. And use tax was even more of an increase than we thought, right?
Yes, yes.
Right.
So it's safe to say roughly maybe close to a couple million in general fund revenues, um...
And, and you may recall from the overview presentation that in the 24 budget, general sales tax, total general sales tax, is 35 million. So where we are year-to-date right now is 32?
32.6.
32.6. And next year, we're budgeting 35 million.
We're at 32.6 right now for overall general sales tax. And we had estimated what? 35?
Well, she's saying...
Next year.
Uh-oh.
Basically we gave the budget, uh, you know, increase in comparison this year.
Okay. What do we estimate for this year for total?
I don't think...
Actually, so I'm just trying to really get it. How, how conservative are we in our estimates? Uh, how, you know what I'm saying? How much?
So maybe what would be beneficial, and we can put this document together for you, is what was the budget for the sales tax and what was the actual per year, right? So we have the actuals here, at least general fund, but we have that for totality.
Yeah.
Um, but again, y- you know, it may be year after year, but the, one of the key factors is how does it relate to what we budget, which I think is what you're trying to get to of, um, you know, are we overly conservative?
And I'm not looking to change that. I'm not looking to change our projections at all. And, and I like, I'd rather be overly conservative.
Yeah.
And I'm fine if we are. So I, I'm just curious as to the numbers.
Sure.
That's all.
We can do that. I think what I'm hearing you say is, I'd like to see what was budgeted, what was actual per year, right?
Yeah.
We can do that.
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Kind of held my powder till now. Um, so kind of, we kind of book ends, I think, and that's probably a good way to look at it between the earlier slide with the countywide 2024s and then with what was just presented as far as the general fund. And so my, my question goes back to the discussion before about vacancies. And, and I've got, I've got a bit of concern. And so I'll present the concern, then ask maybe for something that can be brought next week because we don't have to, you know, it'll probably take that long. Um, to, to me, the, and, and you kind of said it, the trend analysis is what matters here. The budget, less so. At least that's my interpretation. Um, because the trend analysis is as close to what we might call actual. But I guess for me, there's the rub because by, if, if, if that arbitrage, for lack of a better term, between, um, what positions we've put in our budget versus what actually occurs presents this, this discrepancy of that's, at least on the countywide, was about 24 million. And here for the general fund is about a difference of, of, of eight, I guess. I guess I'm trying to understand just how much is wrapped up in those vacancies. I guess I'm trying to understand just how much is wrapped up in those vacancies because to me, it presents two issues. One issue is because you have to fund that position, the money is there, which means you cannot use the money for anything else. And if you, if you don't actually fill the position, or you fill one but you lose another over time, then it just goes into your carryover, if I understand correctly. The carryover then gets budgeted in, but the reality is, you can't do anything with the carryover because you're still budgeting for positions that you think you're going to have, but you don't really have. And, and I just kind of go back to the notion of, well, then that's just dead money. It appears on the books, but it doesn't do anything. And, and as we talk about other needs and other issues, I think the preference is for it to do something. However, if you actually did have all those positions filled, then your difference between expenditures and revenues would go like that. And, and then I throw in, if we, so just follow me for a moment, but then I throw in, if we do a compensation study that tells us that we are not compensating everyone properly, and that's part of the reason why we don't have these positions filled, now to rectify that, my, my lines go like this because I do not have a revenue line that fulfills that. Follow me?
Oh, yeah.
So I guess my question is, if my assumptions and all of that are fairly close to being correct, I'd like to understand what that vacancy issue is from, and I'll, and I'll set aside for the moment that probably part of that is due to compensation. But I would like an understanding of what those vacancies have looked like over time because it does strike me that if there is consistencies among that, then I'm, then I have to ask the question, do I need that position? And can I then reallocate that for something else so that money isn't dead money? And I don't know where my little line of questioning and observation leads to, and I'll be the first to admit that, but I just can't get past seeing a $21 million difference and then an $8 million difference later without at least asking, how does that work? And how can we actually get that money actually working for us?
Right.
And I'll stop right there.
No, I don't disagree with you wholeheartedly because, so I put up on this page, right? Again, if we spend the authorized funding, you know, we have a $10 million deficit. And once you spend it out of fund balance, out of that 14 million, I then only have a $4 million fund balance. So next year, I don't have that 10 million again, right? And so that's where I have a whole concern about how, how we budget and, and the funding we have available.
Yeah.
With regard to vacancies, and we can dig in a little bit more about how much of that, you know, savings really, and I would say that has grown over the last several years, that it comes from position vacancies. And again, this is not new, we are not the only county, we are not the only business where, you know, that is, that is having issues recruiting employees, right? And while recent articles I just read, you know, things are slowing down when it comes to salary adjustments and the craziness that was happening during the COVID and trying to get employees, and employers are like, because it's not sustainable.
Right.
What was happening. So, you know, I have charged some of the departments to take a look at, if we can't fill these positions, and I don't know that it's all simply because of salaries, I don't.
I mean, the people may just not be there.
Well, and I think there is a lack of interest, especially in, in the employment base of wanting, especially to do physical labor jobs.
Right.
That, that, and then when I talk to my colleagues across the nation, that seems to be the area that we have difficulty recruiting in, right? Everybody, and we knew this, we knew this bubble was coming years ago, we talked about it, because we were saying, everybody gets college degree, college degree, college degree. So nobody was going to technical schools, nobody was going to welding, you know, those skill sets were, weren't just, people weren't interested in not doing it, and they're like, well, that's not where the jobs are. Well, now that's where the jobs are. We just want to have the talent and the expertise to apply for those jobs. And then I think part of the other issue is there's a lot, not necessarily a lot of interest in doing those type of jobs.
Right.
So there are jobs that have to be done, how do we make them happen? What technology can we use? What equipment can we do to help kind of, you know, get the job done because those jobs have to be done?
Right, or it may be, it may be a trade-off between personnel and contractual to help cover that gap. And so I know this, this line of questioning opens up a lot of other things.
Right, and to some degree that is, we saw that this year in our road maintenance program, where we had equipment that broke down, and the timing to get it fixed, we weren't going to be able to get it done before the weather changed. So we shifted and did some money and, and expanded the contract with the contract worker. Now, I will tell you, the private sector is having just as much difficulty getting, you know, employees to work in these types of jobs also. So I think we have to look at, and that's part of the study a little bit, of what are those areas and jobs that we're having difficulty getting? And if we make changes in salary, is that going to help? And if so, where do we get the money to make that happen? And if it's not, or it's a combination of that and how we do business?
Right, I mean, I, and I recognize that one lever starts pulling some other things. And, and, and so there may be a school of thoughts that says, just keep doing this because maybe that has the least disruption on the organization. But I, I do kind of feel like, at the end of the day, if we're, if we're taking in funds, we want to deploy them in some fashion other than to be essentially placeholders.
Well, but I would say this, you know, about it, because it is a placeholder a little bit, and again, fortunately, it's how we do budget. You're right, there are some agencies that says, historically, our trend is X percent vacancy, so they don't fund that in their personnel line item, but they don't do personnel budgeting like we do.
Right.
You know, we budget that every position has its own budget, where a lot of agencies will say, this is the budget for your personnel, and this is how much you get to spend, right? And so you just kind of make it happen within those dollars. But we get more into the detail of it. So if there's not money assigned to that particular position, and you can fill it, you've got to make sure you have the money there to do it. So I don't disagree with you. The issue with this is, you know, again, we've talked about, what's the adequate fund balance?
Right.
Right? And so by doing it this way that we're doing it, it does continue to carry over. So really what it is, is it's our fund balance we're carrying over.
Right, well, and I would just say too, to that last point, and you made this a little bit earlier, I, I wholeheartedly agree with this, with this commission creating those guardrails through policy that says, here's what fund balance is, here's how you handle one-time revenue, and so on and so forth. Because then you, because when you don't, in my opinion, you get into these situations where you're just trying to figure out, what does this mean? And what do we actually, what, what can we actually spend money on, and how are we actually doing it? And is, is there a more efficient, better way of doing it? So I'm all for those policies and will insist, come 2024, we start digging into those.
So I would say on this particular chart, when I look at the general fund and I look at the trend analysis, right? And I add in law enforcement because I believe we wholeheartedly need to do that since it doesn't have a fund balance.
Right.
And you look at that far right corner of trend analysis says, we have a 20% fund balance, I believe that's where we should be.
Mm-hmm.
And so my, my recommendation is we don't want to dip below that, right?
Right.
And so, but if our actual expenditures exceed that, you know, 82%,
Right, you're always having to go back into that.
Right, if it goes above the 37, then we're going to dip into less than 20%.
Yeah.
But I, I think, again, you know, it's about looking at trends, and, and we've seen some anomalies. COVID has really created anomalies in trend analysis, you know, of the last several years of what have happened with revenue and what's happened with expenditures, especially personnel. And personnel is our largest category.
Right.
Across the organization, we're in the people business.
Yeah, exactly. Well, again, if it's possible to understand that vacancy piece a little better, and again, if that could be incorporated, doesn't have to be, you know, today, but some other time.
I think that's a good, because that will take some really diving into the data and taking a look at that, and again, but I think that is information we need to provide to the commission as you're looking at those financial policies.
Right.
About, you know, how have we got here, how, and what is sustainable, and what are your goals?
Right, yeah, it, it may not be a, a solution that per se gets plugged into this budget, but I believe it's plugging into something.
Yes.
Whether that's a future budget or if there's a way to incorporate some of that into this one, but at any rate, I've said my piece and I, I appreciate the answers and conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Just want to circle back around to that budgeted vacancies stuff and say, you know, in my 30 years that I've, that I worked in, in government, that's always been an issue everywhere, everywhere I've gone. That's always been there to the point where, so one of the issues I had when I was police chief, it takes me about a year and a half from the hiring process to get an officer that's good to go on his own and patrol. That's, that's six months of the hiring process, background, all that kind of stuff, six months in academy, six months in training. So one of the things I did is I'd ask to overhire. I would project my retirements, long-term IRDs, that kind of stuff, and ask to get people in the academy hired and in the academy before the retirement's gone, so that I wouldn't have such a, such a delta here. I was in a city that, my last city I worked at, we were able to do that, we had money. That's not always possible, but one of the things that scared me the most was when politicians would say, hey, that's been vacant for a year, you must not need that position. And I would panic because I do need that position. And oftentimes, I'd use that salary savings for overtime. Another thing that I didn't like is when my city manager, when I was a chief, my city manager would, would look at, hey, you know, you don't have this position filled, can I take this money for that position back out of your budget and use it somewhere else? I hated that because no, I actually have plans for that money. Overtime was a big part of that because of the position needs to be filled, and if it's not filled, someone has to do it on overtime. So there's, 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 I see there's a big divide here, but at the same time, it doesn't mean we don't need the positions. And I would like to get into the position where our department heads are able to project and begin the hiring process well in advance and maybe even get people in the door in overhire capacity. But again, that goes to the, the two sides of the ledger here that we're always trying to balance, and that's always been, I think, the issue in just about any government, city, county government, is trying to figure out how are we going to pay for everything?
Yeah, and I would say, in my prior life in a city also, we, certainly in our public safety category, because there is academy, right, for either police officers or firefighters. And so while you have them hired, you don't have the benefit of that, that person on the street because they're in academy. And so we did put in procedures and practices and ways you could do that, especially, you know, with retirement. So we, we would hire, but only in public safety. What we did on the other side of the coin, because we were trying, again, to balance the budget, is if you had a vacancy, then we would look at what their payout is because they get their vacation and they get their sick leave. And so even though they're gone, we may be paying six weeks or seven weeks or eight weeks for that position in salary and paid time off that they're entitled to. And so, you know, in, in that world, when it was really tight, we said, you know, you couldn't fill the position until the vacancy, the paid time off was captured and in an additional two weeks. So we would delay it even longer because we were, again, relying on those vacancy savings to either pay for overtime or basically help balance the budget. We budgeted vacancy savings in our budgeting process. And so we don't do that here, we kind of do, but we don't. But there are some agencies that will basically put it in the budget process. I know from an accounting standpoint, you don't, but you don't account, it's not, it's not a debit or a credit, but when you're putting a budget together, we would count it as a revenue, right? So you budget full for expenditures, but on the other side, you would come in and put in vacancy savings, but then you had to monitor that throughout the year to make sure that you capture that. So that's another way to look at this, to make it not be so dramatic, but it, it's a reality of the way it works. Yeah, it is a challenge. But we're looking in all sorts of different ways, not only on how to attract, but also retain, because there's costs in hiring and training, and we have good employees we don't want to lose. But we're also looking at how do we do things differently? You heard a little bit of it, and it typically happens, right, is we're growing, and I certainly appreciate growing and the challenges with public safety, but I will tell you, every department in this organization is impacted by growth. And so we also know that, you know, sort of the support and internal services departments are the last ones to get additional staff typically because it goes for public safety, we understand that. So how do we work smarter? How do we be more efficient? You kind of heard about that, especially with administrative services, how do we stop duplicating work from one silo to another and start being more efficient and relying on technology? So we're looking at all those things to help us through the growth years without having to add staff in those areas.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I think this was, this was the tail end of your presentation.
It is, yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like you to just, you know, remind people that we do have other meetings going on apart from budget meetings, and in fact, we have one scheduled for tomorrow.
That's correct. The next commission meeting is tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock here in the chambers. We also want to encourage our citizens to go out to the website, especially about our comprehensive plan. We are fully in our public engagement process of that, there's some open houses scheduled, there is actually a survey that we really want our residents to go out and complete that is out on the comprehensive plan website, and it's, do you know, we'll, we'll announce that tomorrow night, but it's, I can't remember that. What? ClayCountyCompass.com is the website that is all about our comprehensive plan, and at the very top on that homepage is a link to fill out a survey, and that's very important for us. And it also talks about the dates for the public engagement meetings.
Now, can a citizen, if they don't remember all the different things, can they get on our county website and navigate one way or the other to be able to get this information? Just a matter of, of kind of digging in a little bit?
There, there is information on our website that would be a link to the comprehensive plan website, yes.
Great, okay. I just want to make sure everybody had access, who cared to do that, had the ability to do that with as little balderdash as possible. With that, I see no other comments on the board, and it is nearly 1 o'clock, so unless there's anything further, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for staying.